All right, I will call the order of the regular council meeting for Tuesday, March 25th. Stand for the flinch.
Let's do the party. Do the republic for which since one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right, I need a motion, second for the agenda. I'll make a motion. Need a second?
One second.
Okay, any changes? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Consent.
I want to talk about D, but I don't necessarily need to have it pulled out, but I do want to talk about D. That's the approval of a letter of opposition to missing middle bills.
Um, okay, I need a motion and a second for consent. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and discuss.
Okay. Um, so I am absolutely yay, go for that letter. Um, I was wondering if we wanted to maybe take a further step and share, um, a similar letter to like residents, um, like can we push this out more so it's not just the city so that we can get some residents contacting their representatives? Do, is there a sample letter that we could have?
I was going to bring this up during discussion, but I agree.
Yeah.
Not only with this, but, um, to get them to start contacting, just to let them know certain, some of these bigger issues. This one's pretty big. But like the, the whole Fernbrook business?
Yeah.
It'd be nice to get a couple of these issues to all the residents because they're, at least they're all going to be affected by this one. And have them contact our reps, neighboring reps, anybody and their mother that can do something about it.
Yeah, um, mayor members of council, that's a valid point. Let me see if I can work on some sort of draft sample letter that we can put together.
Yeah.
And put it on our website if you want to use it, fantastic. And these missing middle bills essentially take all of our zoning authority away from us, so it's not just pretty big, it's extremely big.
Yeah.
And essentially takes us from having the ability to say no to a project or no to a duplex or a triplex in a neighborhood to say that you can't say no to them anymore.
Yeah.
So every neighbor may have a twoplex or a triplex or an accessory dwelling unit, which would be essentially change the garage into a dwelling unit on any property without us to say no or yes on so. These are huge bills and most certainly, um, they were supposed to be heard today at the state and local government committee, um, at the senate, and it was, that meeting was canceled today at 12:30. So I don't know if that gives us a little more time to get more letters in. There was roughly 22 letters or so that I saw that were into the senate about that specific item, so. So I will certainly do what I can.
Yeah, and even just, I guess my bigger question is, do we want to just, because I know when I've written letters to people, it's always easier if someone gives me sample language, like here's some sample language to send. It's just easier than starting with a, with a blank page. Um, so whether it's, I don't know how much you want to adjust the current language from this letter, or if there's enough here, like we can just make a few small tweaks to what you have for our letter, like, but anything that we can get out, but we need as many people as possible to contact, um, the representatives. So like, yeah, I'm all in favor of it, I want to do more, and I'm wondering what we as a city can do to, to push that further. Um, would you also recommend, like, I, and this is kind of more just like, order of operations and appropriateness, like, would it be okay if I took this and like I posted it on my Facebook, like on my personal Facebook page for like people in the state and be like, hey, do you live in Minnesota? You should like be aware of this and contact your state representative. Would it be okay for me to use the letter, like as our letter as a template, or is there a place you'd recommend I go find a template letter? Like is the league of Minnesota cities, are they a resource?
Yeah, I can give you the league of Minnesota cities sample letter that you want to use.
Yeah.
You can most certainly post our letter once it's been approved by council, that no problem at all, but.
Okay.
If you want the sample letter, I can just send you the sample letter and you can put it out there and then you can say, yes, and you could change city of to whatever you want it to be.
Pop out whatever city, but if you live in Minnesota, this is really important.
Yep.
So that's my first thing. My second thing is like the counter to this. So I'm opposed to it, the, the, the state getting their hands involved in it, but there's a reason that it came through last year and it's coming through again this year, and that's because there is a problem with the missing middle. Like there is not first time home buyer affordable housing, and as long as cities continue to ignore the issue, this is going to keep happening, right? Like until we actually make some, some actual steps and can say, no, look, this is what we're doing to address the issue, it is going to keep coming up. So I would like to encourage us as a body and as a city to think about what we're doing and what active steps we're doing, because it also, because I take my own personal job from this, like I'm an educator and I work, um, and the state legislator is always trying to tell me how to do my job, um, every year, and we're always pushing back, but that pushback goes better if we can say, look, this is what we're doing to address the issue. Like affordable school and affordable textbooks is like one of the big things that they're always on our butts about. Um, but when we can say, no, look, this is what we're doing, so like back off, we know it's an issue, we're addressing it, but I think our argument is stronger if we can point to specific things we as a city or cities are doing to address this issue. Um, I don't have that answer today, but I do think it's a conversation that we as a council need to have, um, so that we can say, no, this is what we're doing to address this issue. So, because if we just keep ignoring it, these bills are going to keep coming up and we're going to lose at some point unless we do something about it ourselves. So I would rather be the ones in the driver's seat than sit and do nothing until we finally lose this, this battle and then have the state come in and tell, tell us what to do. So it's my kind of two cents on that topic. So yes to approval, yay, share it, yay. We as a council and as a city need to get a little more proactive about handling this on our own. That's my two cents.
Anybody else have anything for consent?
I had just two things quick, which is much shorter than my original list, so thank you to everyone who responded to some of my questions. Marty, I just wanted to say thank you to you or whoever got the, uh, the correct number of gallons on the Maple Grove water bill, so that doesn't look like we're paying $12 a gallon for, for water.
You're welcome.
Who did that, wasn't me.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you. My other question, Chief Enga, we had a, one of the Dodge Chargers in for an engine, it looks like, and I'm just curious on how many of these cars that we still own versus the lease program that we're on now?
Um, I believe we still own four Dodge Durango's. Um, Dodge Charger and the Chevy Tahoe will be being shipped off sometime either this week or next week, um, to be sold at auction, which will then be used, um, to counter the lease payments. We had to have it fixed to get it down to get the lights off, otherwise we would have had to tow it down to get lights off, um, and then brought back here to get it brought to Enterprise, but we have four Dodge Durango's, um, that we still own. The rest is on lease.
Okay, and those will cycle out over the next couple of years?
Correct.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay, you got a motion and second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Consent is five zero, open forum. Limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. State your name and address, no council action will be taken, items will be referred back to staff.
Thank you. Um, Russian Grover, 11320 Fernbrook Lane, Dayton. I'm here to talk about the intersection of 113th and County Road 121. It's a very small intersection. You have two, two lane roads, both with no shoulders intersecting. Just last month, a garbage truck northbound on 121, waiting for traffic to clear to make a left turn onto 113th was stopped on 121. The car behind him was a woman with two children in the backseat, and she stopped behind the garbage truck, but the person behind her did not stop, resulting in a rear end collision. Both cars were towed away and appeared to be totaled. Also, our mailbox is at that intersection and there's a street sign that's there. The traffic, which includes big semis with long trailers carrying huge earthmoving equipment, have a hard time navigating this corner, especially if there's a car sitting on 113th waiting to get onto 121. Due to sundance and all the new houses on or near 113th, there are cars sitting there a lot of the time waiting to get onto 121. Now imagine this scenario, a car sitting there in the eastbound lane of 113th Avenue and a semi with a long trailer and heavy equipment is trying to turn onto 113th. The semi on 121 has to come to a full stop and wait for the car on 113th to get onto 121 and get out of the way. The car can't go because the semi is blocking his view. Well, you may think the driver should go because the semi is blocking traffic, not true. People behind the semi will pull out and pass in a no passing zone because they think they're privileged and they don't have to stop and wait. So now all lanes on 121 have traffic going the same direction, and if someone pulls off of 113th, boom, there's an accident. I've seen several close calls, the same is true if a semi on 113th is waiting to pull out onto 121. The rig needs both lanes to enter, so he must wait until he has a big break in the traffic so he can use both lanes of 121 to get out on the road. Just last week, we saw a car pull out from behind the semi, pull up alongside the semi in the wrong lane, then turn right onto 121, crossing in front of the stopped semi, so he could go south. And just yesterday, we counted, Keith and I counted 79 cars coming off of 113th onto 121 at 1:30 in the afternoon. The line stretched as far to the west as you could see, and it took them 10 minutes to all get through the intersection. There must have been something going on on sundance, I don't know, but imagine if you had a semi on 121 waiting for 79 cars to get out of the way. Remember, that semi needs both lanes on 113th to make that turn. He would have been stopped on County Road 121 for 10 minutes. We've had our mailbox knocked down, we've seen the street sign get knocked down, right now that street sign looks like the Leaning Tower of Pisa, and it's been bumped and jostled so many times, one more bump and it'll probably come down again. I know that eventually this intersection will not be there. In the meantime, you have to think of an alternative route for the big rigs that are going to be pulling and entering to start the DCM project before you approve it. Maybe Rush Creek Road, maybe an entrance from 117th onto Dean's property? Both are wider and better intersections than 113th. Or maybe start the 114th Avenue roundabout first as an entry point for the property. At any rate, 113th Avenue intersection is not able to handle the traffic that's going to come with Dean's buildout. I'm thinking ahead and thinking of alternatives for an obviously bad intersection. I'm trying to help you do your job. Your job, may I remind you, is not to help the developer make as much money as possible. They know the property, they know full well the rules and codes the city has mandated. Your job is to enforce the rules and codes of the city. Your job is to protect the citizens that are already living in the area and paying taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Name and address and then.
Hi, John Williams. 13620 North Diamond Lake Road. My wife and I purchased the house, uh, two years coming March 30th. We enjoy it here. Uh, we purchased the house not knowing of the, uh, project going, um, on with a bike path that's, um, going to be put on the crossing at Vinewood Lane and North Diamond Lake Road. Uh, we didn't know about it until like two weeks ago, we come back from vacation, we got this on our door. We're okay with, with city expansion, we understand that, uh, you know, expansion's happening. We've talked to Zach on the phone and, uh, we understand that, uh, things are in progress, the plans and, um, but we don't really know exactly what these plans consist of, and we just want to put a name and a face along with, uh, the address and, uh, just let you folks know that, uh, we're not too thrilled about having our front yard taken away. We are the most affected ones, uh, we're, we're just right up against, and, uh, we don't know if, uh, streetlights are viable, we want to make sure that we have eastern access onto North Diamond Lake Road, because we don't know if that's going to be with the double lanes and stuff like that. There's a lot of ifs and, uh, we're not certain where this boundary is going to be, we'd kind of like to know. And, uh, we looked in the constitution, the Minnesota constitution, it was, uh, section one, article 13, something about the property, um, property shall not be taken, destroyed, or altered for public use without prior compensation, and, uh, Zach had mentioned that there's no monetary compensations available. Kind of curious what, uh, what sort of offers were made on that, should that event rise. But again, we just wanted to put a name and face.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Keith Grover, 113th and Fernbrook. I, I just have one thing that of all the times I've spoken in front of you guys about the traffic in the area there, and I think you understand our issue. One of the things that keeps getting brought up to me by one of our neighbors at the farm, Floyd Nelson, he's like 86 years old, he says, Keith, did you mention that the road at, at Fernbrook Lane, Rush Creek Parkway or Elm Creek Road, whatever you want to call it, there's no streetlight on that intersection? All we have is those, one of those goofy little trail lights that's on the, the walkway that comes from the new addition, Dennis's favorite lights. But that's all there is. And if you're not familiar with that intersection, you come up there at night, that intersection does not light up at all. In the wintertime, it's absolutely horrible because you can't figure, and I've lived there my whole life practically, right? You can't figure out where the heck the intersection is. The markings on the road, what few there are on 121, they all get covered up with snow, and there's nothing to illuminate that intersection. So if, if we could put something on the works that would help illuminate that intersection, would make it a little bit better, we all know the traffic on that is not going to get better, it's just going to get worse. So that's, I keep forgetting to bring that up, I promised them I would this week, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online?
So if you wanted to speak in the open forum, if you can use the raise your hand function. I'm not seeing any.
Okay, we will move on to staff consultant and council updates.
Zach? Yes, good evening, mayor members of the council. Um, two updates for you tonight. I received a request from Carol Levin on Monday to discuss the council's projections on their 2050 plan, along with the advantages and challenges of that growth that we have had and are anticipated to have in terms of population. If you have any items that you'd like me to discuss with Carol Levin, please let me know before. Um, it sounds like it's going to be next week on Tuesdays, kind of what I've kind of put on the calendar for them to have a meeting and interview with me, so. And then we have also received an update just today from Green Espo, who's, uh, about our housing first case, saying that the hearing was today. Um, then there was, um, arguments heard on both sides, along with the information and the briefs that were given, the judge will reach a decision on the last kind of item on that, um, case left, uh, before June 23rd. And as soon as I hear, I will provide an update to the council. Thank you very much.
Amy?
Uh, last week I attended the MCFLA conference, um, from Wednesday to Friday, and so I was able to catch up on some, um, classes and get good advice from neighboring communities and have connections there, so that was a good experience.
Marty?
Uh, I have a couple of things. Uh, well for rehab, um, the well has been drilled out to remove the excess grout from in there, um, test pumping is underway, uh, the well is showing good water quality at the moment, um, they're going to be doing another 24 hour pumping to sit, you know, to get it to the clear that we need it to be at, so it's looking good currently that the sand has been prevented from coming back. Um, well, head treatment plant, the pressure tanks were placed this last week. Masons are going to be on site, um, first week of April, they're going to be moving some, uh, some stockpile stuff onto the site, uh, this week, so that's moving on. DNR boat landing, I don't know if you're aware, but there's a heave in the actual boat, uh, launch ramp, um, where the ice is pushed on it and it's made two of the planks heave up. Uh, DNR are aware of it, they're going to have that, um, resolved, um, in time for fishing opener, and street sweeping is scheduled for the, uh, week of April 7th.
Chief?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thanks to the efforts of firefighter Peyton Barthel, the Office of Emergency Medical Services, um, has licensed the department for emergency medical responder initial classes as well as refreshers and the EMT refresher, so that will help with department scheduling for refreshers of EMT and EMR as well as some departments savings.
Evening, mayor members of the council, just to let you know I'll be out the next two council meetings, uh, but I'll have somebody in my place during the meeting.
No updates?
Just to let council know, we did get the official notice that the MnDOT state aid dollars were in fact allocated to the city and ready for use. We were told we could be confident initially, but now we got the official, okay, so that came through.
Extra confident.
Extra confident now.
Amy?
Uh, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Um, one update on the, um, Office of Cannabis Management has been issuing some news releases and such, there are a little, a couple of sort of administrative things that cities will need to do that I'll talk to staff about, um, but just sort of for everyone's information, um, as to timing, they are doing all of their, um, all the rules, uh, that they have to have in place before, um, before the Office of Cannabis Management can start issuing licenses for retail businesses. They are in the hands of the administrative law judge, and they hope to have everything up and running. The words were in the coming weeks, but that was a little vague, but maybe by the, they are hoping by the end of the first quarter of 2025.
Okay. Zach? Zach?
I got nothing.
I got nothing?
Nothing for me.
Well, those letters we talked about, um, to residents? So, so it sounds like it's too late to hit this?
It, no, I, so the meeting got canceled from today.
Yep.
So I don't know if it, that means it got rescheduled? I don't know if that means that it's totally canceled whatsoever, so they have another meeting on Thursday that was scheduled.
And that's just to get it out of committee, right?
And that's just got to get it out of committee.
Oh.
So it's still technically in committee, um, but that committee meeting was canceled, so I don't know when it comes back, it has not been rescheduled yet.
But really, the, so I'm not, I'm not aware of, well, um.
Because it has to pass through committee before it gets to the full.
So.
Hearing.
I, I, I still think we should get a letter out to the population.
Yep.
Um, it's going to cost, give or take five grand.
Four. The idea would be just, hopefully we could put something on the website or something even, it would be applicable to.
I'm thinking every.
You want to physically send a letter out?
I'm okay with that.
Do you agree it's about five grand?
It's probably five.
That's what we spent for the newsletter, I think.
Yeah, probably, well, that's just for postage and they have printing it too, so yeah, probably about five grand, right?
I don't, I, I.
I think it's worth it personally.
Yes.
Yes. So then it's a matter of what we want to send them.
Yeah, so the idea would be to send them just to kind of a blank, you know, here's a kind of a blank sheet with your address on it, and then it would, you know, let us know what it is, some sort of small blurb on that, and then have a actual sheet behind it you can fill out.
With a contact info?
Yeah, so the contact info or whatever, so that they can, so otherwise you're going to send them and say, hey, this is what it is, and then you're not going to give them a copy of the letter, you got to give them a copy of the letter too.
Yeah.
Whatever you want to design or, or what.
Yeah. Okay. Is this something that we need to see again, or?
If you guys are going to be putting together, I guess that's going to be a template document and it's going to be sent to all the residents and we're just going to try to get it out by the end of the week.
I think it just needs some kind of forward explaining why.
Yep, that'll be on that.
What this is about and why we feel it's important.
Right. Okay. I got nothing else. Still, nothing? Okay, we will move on to, um, item E. Do I have to do anything with this?
Yeah, mayor members of council, you don't have to do anything with this item, um, what we do, we need to, we needed to post that it was actually happening because we did send out a letter that said it was going to happen. Um, since sending out that letter, we've, you know, tried to play the, the cautious game by sending out the notice and posting. Because post it for, we should have it, well technically it's canceled because it's not going to happen, so you can open and close it right away, or you can just say it's canceled and we're moving on, so either or will work.
What, am I supposed to be opening and closing it, or can we vote to cancel it? Or should, is?
There's no need to take any action, there's no need to vote to cancel it, it's just simply canceled.
Okay. Okay, item F. Who's got this one?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight you were asked to review and, uh, provide comments and feedbacks to the applicants on an industrial, uh, concept plan, uh, near the corner of Dayton Parkway and 117th Avenue North. Uh, the overall site here is, uh, outlined in white on the comp plan map and red in the zoning map. Uh, it's three, roughly 32 and a quarter acres. Uh, the first phase of development includes a, a 15 acre site on the south portion, uh, that has proposed a 200,000 square foot warehouse and distribution spec building. Uh, the current guidance of the property is a mix of land uses, um, between industrial, business park and commercial. And the current zoning is, uh, I-1 on the Westerly property related to the development of the Cube's building to the west of Dayton Parkway, and the remaining two parcels are still currently guided, or zoned A1, and this is in the current MUSA staging area. So as I mentioned before, it'd be a 200,000 square foot, uh, warehouse and distribution building that, uh, includes a portion of office space. Um, there is, uh, proposed semi, uh, truck loading docks on the north side of the building here, uh, 17 dock doors on the elevation shown with, uh, 39 knockout panels, uh, for potential future doors, not that those would be, um, utilized, um, but mainly based on need. Uh, vehicle parking and office area is oriented in the corner, and the parking is outlined here on the south portion of the property, uh, and then a roughly 38,000 square foot, uh, outdoor storage space on the east, the southeast end. Now here's the site looking south. Uh, this is just kind of a overview of the setback requirements for the I-1 district, which is what this property would be zoned if it were, uh, approved in terms of, uh, future applications that the applicants would have to apply for. Currently, the layout meets all of the building setbacks as, uh, required for the I-1 district. Uh, here's also an overview of the parking setbacks, uh, currently the proposed layout meets all of the, the, uh, the setback requirements. In front of you there as well is there is a revised, uh, site plan or more of an updated site plan that kind of lays out what the, uh, amount of parking spaces could be provided on that south end of the property, as roughly, I believe it was 174, um, parking spaces. A high level overview is that there, that would be consistent or compliant with the parking standards in the I-1 district, uh, really kind of comes down to the amount of proposed office space within the building. And then here's just an overview of the site coverage, all meeting compliance with the I-1 district in terms of impervious surface and building footprint. As I mentioned about the parking, some considerations is that their loading docks and potential, uh, trailer parking area is, uh, oriented on the north side of the property, um, and regardless of, uh, what the concept shows, uh, without, the applicants have been, it mentioned that they are not intending to apply for a planned unit development, so the expectation was that they'd be able to meet the I-1 standards with parking. Access and circulation, the access is actually provided out of, uh, the, what is the last leg of Dayton Parkway, that, uh, roundabout that hasn't been constructed yet, um, be one access. Uh, the applicant will have to provide an exhibit that demonstrates, uh, The applicant will have to provide an exhibit that demonstrates circulation, internal traffic maneuvering through the site via standard submittal. And then the outdoor storage area would have to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance and screened in accordance with the landscape buffering requirements. It was noted during the public comment at the planning commission meeting that there is some concern about outdoor storage next to adjacent parcels that are residential currently. And through the review of the zoning ordinance, the limitation on outdoor storage is really set on not allowing it for properties that are, it can't be adjacent to properties that are guided for residential. There is one property that is on the south portion of that outdoor storage area that is currently guided medium density and that would be reviewed and considered through the conditional use permit process. General landscaping shall comply with the zoning ordinance section around stormwater ponds, parking lot islands and the outdoor storage area as well as a 35-foot landscape buffer along Dayton Parkway as that is identified as a future collector road. And that is a standard of the zoning ordinance. Another topic that was discussed at the planning commission meeting and recommendation provided by staff as well was that consideration should be given to the building layout and if the building can be rotated so that the vehicle parking for the office and standard vehicle parking is on the north side of the building rather than the south while the truck loading area and the truck parking area is along the south property line adjacent to the existing industrial park. And then existing screening would also assist with that along the south property line. The planning commission discussed this and they were all in consensus that consideration should be given to the orientation of the building. The planning commission also discussed the Dayton Parkway alignment. This shown here, also in your packet, was a design that the applicants had provided showing a real, potential realignment of Dayton Parkway and that essentially if a realignment of Dayton Parkway in this area were to happen, it would not make this project feasible. Both the applicants and staff had recommended that the current alignment for Dayton Parkway remain the same. And the planning commission concurred and said that it is essentially too late for anything in this area to change where it is existing. Here's just a snapshot of the expected applications that you would see if the applicants chose to move forward with this project after the concept review, including a plat rezoning. The comprehensive plan amendment is only specific to the commercial area on the north end of the property. A comp plan amendment would not be required for the initial phase of construction as warehouse and distribution is consistent in the industrial and business park comp plan as land use designations in the comp plan. And just to reiterate, the role of the city council at this point is to review the concept plan, discuss it and offer input in any desired changes or improvements. All comments are advisory only and non-binding and no action should be taken at this time. And the planning commission did hold a public hearing and I kind of already went over what their summary was of the discussion. More broadly though, there was a conversation about the planning commission and the city council meeting together to focus on the area, not only potentially this area currently, but also those parcels to the east along East French Lake Road and looking into the land use designations on that area as the current land use map in the comp plan reflects a alignment of Dayton Parkway that was not followed. So I'd be, staff would be interested to get your feedback on whether that would be something you'd want to move forward with at this point in time. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Well, I would say yes, for me on the zoning piece of it, that it aligns with the plan for the Parkway. You know, I know we continue to talk about the Parkway not being in the right place, but it seems like doing something with it is really expensive and we're going to have to find a way to make the best of it.
Yeah. So we know also because the comp plan was built, the land use was built around the Parkway going its original route, we will be probably changing quite a bit of that. How are we going to get at it? If that all goes to I-1, or if it all goes to something other than residential, how are we getting access to that thing?
Are you, in terms of if it changes from what its current designation is from industrial? Let me go back to this.
Oh, if it isn't residential.
If it isn't residential. Yeah, that is a good question. There is no proposed road with this current layout of the, the area on the south portion of this property. In your, I think the site plan also that I had mentioned that's in front of you as well, shows a conceptual layout of 113th being extended and connected to East French Lake Road. And I don't know if it was a consensus at the planning commission level, but there was certainly a lot of discussion on that. At this point, if the road doesn't get extended with a project like this, they would support medium density or some sort of residential along that East French Lake to kind of eliminate that concern of getting from East French Lake when it's like comes to a commercial or industrial property over to Dayton Parkway and on I-94.
You're talking about the, the west side of East French Lake?
Correct, yeah. It'd be these ones right here.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, the planning commission did direct staff to study this further, in this corner.
Okay. It just seems, go ahead.
What you just said, I think is, is a valid concern that that area to the east of this project, you know, has the same guide, guidance for future zoning and how do you get to it? We don't want to be putting industrial traffic onto, I guess it's just French Lake Road there. But it doesn't, doesn't seem like that would work. And so, you know, is there, you know, is there a way to some sort of overall site I don't know what, honestly, what level of interest those residents have in, you know, in moving on or are they, you know, are they there, you know, this is, this is their place and they're going to stay? Or have they, you know, sort of seen the writing on the wall and, and have some interest in?
Do you have one of the landowners that would like to speak?
That'd be great. Not up to me though, that's the mayor's call.
Does anybody have more questions for staff?
I mean, one of the questions, I do think we need to explore, explore this area more. And the question I have is, I mean, do we really need that much industrial or does it make more sense to make it the east of this current property, west of the road? Do we need this much industrial? And I think, I think that is the broader question that came up at planning commission. I think it's the broader question to have about this area. And I think that goes to one of our goals was the large area planning. And this is, I think this is where we need to start because this is.
Well, this one should have been started.
Well, the ship has maybe sailed a little bit, but like maybe we can, I don't know, at least tell it to avoid the iceberg that's dead ahead and veer left, veer left. I don't know. But I feel like it's worth having that conversation as soon as possible.
Well, we will because the guidance is all messed up.
Yeah. Because the road's not there. Everything's got to change, but we got to do that. So how quickly can we do that is my question.
I agree and I think this, sooner the better because this is all in current.
Yeah.
And so we're, you know, we can either do it or we can have it handed to us.
And certainly with throughout this, like John had mentioned, that the planning commission directed us to kind of begin the study of what could be changed. I mean, obviously with, whether it's a workshop with the city council and the planning commission together to look at this at a broad scale, that would also include stakeholder engagement for the property owners to get an understanding of what their understanding is of the area, what potentially their interests are in seeing if they, in terms of a future sale or something like that, what they would be interested in. And that would certainly come into factor when doing the studies. So we'd certainly engage with them.
Okay. And you guys are looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, whatever the guidance is? Kind of, is that kind of what you're doing?
In terms of right now?
Well, if, if the planning commission asks you to look at this, I'm guessing if we just made the whole shoot and match residential, this wouldn't, access wouldn't necessarily be an issue.
That was kind of the tenor of the conversation at the planning commission meeting.
And I mean, that makes sense too. You're not going to want business traffic going up and down. So is the intention if it goes to I-1 or if it goes to some non-residential?
It'd be more of whether, from my understanding from the planning commission meeting is that if, whether it is appropriate for it to stay as is or if it should be changed to a residential. I don't know if it would change to something, anything other than what it currently is beyond residential.
Okay. I, I thought they had also, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought the intent also was to figure out how we would get a road to it.
Yeah, and I, yeah, go ahead, John.
Oh, yes, is it feasible to, or how would it be feasible to extend 113th to East French Lake Road? And then what, what is the land use north and south of that road?
And is this a deal where extending, and this came up with planning too, but extending this road off the roundabout underneath the, to the south is just at this point, to use an overused phrase lately, is the ship to sail. We can't do much about that. Is that correct?
It'd be expensive. That's a six-legged roundabout that we would build and then still have Dayton Parkway that's.
Hold on, Mayor, I think what you're asking is, could we extend that roundabout there and extend the roads directly east?
The original plan for that road was that it would run east. And at some point, that was nixed.
I don't know if it's been officially nixed, but I think that's just been the general idea from the landowner and maybe even the developer. I can't speak for either one of them, but is that they would prefer not to have a road there on the south side of their properties?
I understand that.
But it doesn't mean that it's been nixed. It's just that's been their desire.
If this is something that the council's interested in, like this is the time to make that.
Correct. Well, and again, assuming that the zoning is significantly not residential in those lots, in those four lots, we got to find a way to get there. And I don't, I don't know that 113th is the answer. And maybe it is, but like I said, the original route was that off that roundabout, it would come down and go due east and then the connection to 113 in the middle there would be kind of teed off of that.
Yeah, and at this point, that is still possible. Based on this being a concept plan, this is when the time for the council to provide the input back to the developer or the landowner of what you'd like to see. If that is, you'd like to see a road extension from that roundabout directly east along the south boundary of that property, then it needs to be known by, by the developer and the landowner.
Well, I guess I'm asking you guys, is that something we want? Because I don't know how we're going to get at these properties. Unless you're, we know that the 113th connection is going to be fine.
We believe it, it will, it can be extended across the wetlands.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I think the answer to your question is, it can go either way. Mayor, and I know you may not like to hear that answer, but you go either way, 113th is possible to be extended. Is it super cheap? Probably not because it goes to a wetland, but you also, it's not going to be super cheap to go across the south side of that property either from the current application you have in front of you. So I don't know if it's the right answer. I don't know if there is a right answer, but it's possible both ways. But I think your, the question that you're asking is, is it able to access to the west from those four properties around the corner there of East French Lake Road? The answer is yes, it can. It's just may or not come directly from, on this site.
To me, if you, I personally don't have a problem with the industrial piece of this. Now, if you want to cut it off at some point, the properties on the east side, you could bring, if, if you went residential there, you know, where there was apartments, kind of whatever, I mean, you can bring that in off the East French Lake Road.
That, yeah, that you can.
And then not even extend the 113th. I mean, to me, you'd, you'd cut off your, get your industrial away from the residential lane. That way you're not going to have any trucks. Otherwise, if you extend that across to 113, you're going to have trucks going on the residential area. I mean, you're not going to stop it.
Yep. That was really the tenor of the conversation at the planning commission meeting too. So really if the road doesn't get extended where, on the south end of this property where it was originally discussed, then it would seem from the planning commission's perspective, maybe a look into residential on that west side of East French Lake was more appropriate.
Yeah. And I suspect when we look at it, we will conclude that based on where we're at today, that that will have to be all medium, high-density residential.
Does the council have a desire for more industrial east of this property?
I don't know. We haven't looked at it.
I personally don't have a problem with it.
With, with which?
With more, with the industrial side of it. That's what this area is.
I don't either. It's just that we don't, we just, we have, we know we got to replan this area. And we don't know what the answer is going to be because we haven't looked at it yet. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't shut off a possibility of it being non-residential. But I mean, if we're, we're stuck, we're stuck.
But there's also that pocket of residential and we're going to have to have, right now they're buffered with farmland between the residential and the industrial, but that farmland's going to go somewhere. And so that's where the high-density residential comes into play, right? It's the buffer. And so I do think I would be fine with having that, that, but then at a certain point you have to say, okay, here's where, here's where it stops and we have to do the switchover. But we already have residential coming in darn close, like low-density residential. So we don't have a whole lot of wiggle room before we have to put that line on, like, and this is it. So I think, I would like to have, I personally would like to have a conversation with planning commission, a session as soon as possible to talk about this little chunk and the big, to me, the big two questions are, are we continuing 113th or not? And then if we are, which, which option? And if the question is, no, we're just not going to continue 113th, well then we're done with that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we are, then we have to pick which one. And then that also goes to the, okay, so do we change that little swath to be the high-density residential or medium-density residential? Because we already have low-density pushing up mighty close as it is. And they clearly, based on how they have the roads, they're anticipating this being low-density. I mean, they have the roads right there, ready to go in. And that's that property. So I don't really see it making sense for this to be industrial, just based on where that's located. But I think this needs to be a conversation as soon as possible.
Yeah. Okay. Loaded. Anybody else have any questions for staff on the concept plan?
Refresh me if you could on how we're getting utilities, sewer and water to this site and is that part of the project?
Separate project. The water is readily available under Dayton Parkway with multiple stubs provided for it. So the water is an easy one. That's off a large diameter line under the Dayton Parkway. The sewer currently exists at the southeast corner of the, I'll call it the, the business park that exists along 113 today. That sewer will need to be extended north to this property and then ultimately extended to and north of 117th as part of this project. So likely a separate city contracted project to get the sewer up to this development. Financing for that still to be determined. And then with the development, it would be extended through the site and then credits would be offered for the upsizing of that, that trunk line.
Further work through the site.
Further work through the site, correct.
And these were coming up through those two properties on the south, on the very south of that 113 that utilities are coming up?
We, we need to explore that. There was a feasibility study proposed to look at those options that was not authorized. So we, we don't know as of today.
Okay.
So we need to figure out if it needs to go west and then north or straight north is the two options we're thinking of.
So given that stuff, what, what is the timeline on this project? Mayor, we can.
I think that would be a question, best answer.
Do we have any more questions for staff?
I don't know.
Can we, the developers come up? Thank you. Name and, name and address. Name and, name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mark Anderson, civil engineer with Samba Tech, and we're working with Opden here on the industrial project.
Mayor, members of council, my name's Jay Moore with Opden Investment Company, 400 Water Street, Excelsior, Minnesota.
What is your timeline?
Well, the ultimate goal was to get hopefully some support tonight out of this body and planning commission. We've been working with staff for the past several months on getting to the point where we are and those materials that you have in front of you to view. And after tonight, the goal would be to engage further and, and do the full design and come through with the process that Hayden laid out, and go through site plan application, CUP, the other applications, zoning through the summer months and potentially start in the fall of this year, if we're supported.
And we would run utilities up when?
For the, for the sewer. The sooner we can look at it, the better. We're in the process of putting together a proposal for that project to start the surveying and the preliminary analysis for the alignment. If we were to go to the east, we'd be substantially going through wetland along the east side, if we were to go straight north rather. That being said, it might be advantageous to construct this during winter time, under frozen conditions, just to allow restricted trench and easier path through there. So maybe a December construction might be targeted, which I think is probably realistic depending on the financing methods that are selected. Assessments slow things down, so if there are to be special assessments considered, there might be a longer timeline associated with that.
Otherwise, west and north would be when?
Similar timeline. I think we could be ready. That one, certainly less critical, maybe even detrimental to con, to consider that one during frozen conditions. But maybe we could do it early enough to beat those conditions, or we'd do it right away in the following spring.
Where would the east path be beneficial?
Less pipe.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so straighter shot, less properties involved. We would just have two, there are some existing easements in there, so the easements would be a little more limited on what we would need.
There was, I thought the cost concern was that it's, it is a bunch of wetland.
There's a, there's wetland, and to be honest, our early review of it, we suspected pretty substantial impacts to the business operating on that property, but we have spoke with them, and it seems that it would be less detrimental than we anticipated. They seemed agreeable to the, to the improvements that it could be accommodated.
Okay. More questions?
So the, the feedback from planning commission was to rotate, well, there was lots of feedback, obviously, but one of them was to rotate, and from the staff, to rotate at 180, so that basically your, the pretty part is by the wetland and the commercial, and the truck parking is, you know, backed up to other truck parking. Are you guys, I didn't hear from, I didn't hear your response. Are you okay with that or not? I don't know if I was head shaking. I was watching online, so I could not see any nonverbals, so.
All right. Well, thanks for raising the question. It certainly is one of the topics that we want to get a little bit more feedback on tonight. So I, I believe, John or Hayden, does council have the updated exhibits that we sent?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what we wanted to point out here is just a couple of things. So with respect to the building orientation, our preference is to build the building and the truck court as shown, with truck court on the north side. And that's really driven by a couple of factors. And the first, and probably the most important, is the terrain of the site is, is relatively flat, and it's sloping toward the large central pond. So it definitely works best to have the storm sewer on the north side and the low side, the truck court, which is four feet below the finished floor of the building on the north side where it's lowest by the pond. We did look at extending and flipping that building, and what it requires is a storm sewer that goes all the way around the building, probably from each direction. It's about 100 feet of pipe to go around the building. The pipe itself is not so much a concern, but the slope on the pipe raises the building up about three feet from what it would be with the truck court on the north. And so the site is already short of material, and so this would be another three feet that we'd have to actually raise this building. So what we'd like to do is comply with code, provide the landscape buffer along Dayton Parkway with Birmingham, and also provide screening on the site itself. And so Mohegan Hansen prepared some renderings of what that would look like from Dayton Parkway, both initially with smaller trees, and then over time, larger trees as well. So it, it definitely breaks up the sightlines and, and meets code from a screening perspective. So that's really what we determined with our review of the site grades and the screening opportunities for this site. So again, our preference is to keep the orientation the way it is. I think, as noted previously, the I-1 code, we could meet all the code requirements with that orientation, and that's really how we, we need to move forward on this site.
That answers the question of why these two packets were different. So it's now, or very soon after build versus, how long do you think was the prediction for how long it would take for those trees to?
Yeah, I think the first image with the smaller trees, you know, is 10 years or less.
Okay.
It's, and then essentially 10 years or more.
Okay.
Is the projection in those images. And, you know, in the first five to maybe even as much as 10 years, the, the truck court is visible, but it's definitely broke up because you essentially have two rows of screening, one at Dayton Parkway and another one at the truck court. So it's certainly going to limit the sightlines to the truck court itself.
Any other questions?
No, I was going to ask about the building orientation too. And I don't, I don't have a strong feeling about, you know, the aesthetics of it being one way or the other. You're going to see trucks.
Yeah.
And as the, I know this isn't part of the, the current project, but building out on, on the rest of the property, I think, also obscures that side of the building.
Right.
From French Lake Road, West French Lake Road. So that, that's not a big concern of mine, and I, and I think your reasons for wanting to have it the way you have it are valid.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
I guess maybe one other comment that
Go ahead.
we'd like to make if we could. Mayor?
Is that person still online? Okay.
Just pointing to the exhibit again, we, we updated this one in the packet of information, and so it does show an alignment for 113th, which would be an extension of the existing roadway. And the alignment is such that it does project northeast, and for the most part, we should be able to go around that wetland that exists there. And, and again, this is just a potential future road alignment, but if there is traffic that needs to get from East French Lake Road to the roundabout, this is a potential route. And as we understand it, city staff is already working on the alignment, and right-of-way acquisition headed south of the roundabout. So we believe it's a viable route, regardless of whether it's industrial development over here or residential.
Any more? All right, I think we are good. Oh, yes. Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Um, someone on, are we going to try to pronounce the name, but if the landowner...
That's Madhu.
Madhu?
Madhu.
Uh, Madhu.
My name is Madhu Kohlen. I'm the landowner. I just would like to say, we, based on the current plan, we provided some land for access on Dayton Parkway, and I support the Opden concept plan as is, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak to this? All right?
Okay.
I, I think we're, we're done with questions for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jay, did you have anything more you want to?
Well, I, I guess, yeah, I do have just
Okay.
one more question. I mean, the, the goal, I think, for all of us here is to, to see if there's enough support for us to take the next, next step, which, you know, involves investing a lot of design dollars in a, in a very, you know, simple manner. That's what we're, we're trying to do, and we're trying to get some guidance here. So planning commission, you know, there was a lot of questions, and I didn't come out of that thinking, yeah, there's, there's some answers here, or there's a clear direction. I think with this new exhibit, and Jason, feel free to chime in, you know, I think the, the parcel to the south or the roadway connection in the south is in process with city staff, and that the road going to the east with 113th probably alleviates any concern in the future if there's going to be a connection over there. So we were just trying to get, you know, direction, and I don't know if that comes tonight or in a future timeline, but, you know, we're sitting here, and the clock's ticking, you know, are we going to, we're going to go forward or not? We got Madhu on the phone saying, you know, you're going to make this happen or not. So we're just looking for, for some sort of direction, and that would be great if we could get some.
Typically with these, we'll, if we have problems, area, problem areas, objections, we'll let staff know.
Okay.
Didn't hear a lot.
I don't have a problem with it.
So I think as far as council goes here.
If I could, I can just chime in on 113th a little bit.
Go ahead.
So my takeaway from the planning commission was more or less, yes, let's look to the east of this property and what that should be. If it's to be residential, we don't necessarily need a road extension east because we don't want to intermingle those uses, if you will. However, if it was to be industrial, how do they get back to Dayton Parkway is the question, without sending them out to East French Lake Road or 117th. That's where the 113th extension comes in.
Yeah.
So if that's extended to the east and access points to the north, that's where that additional industrial could funnel down into the west, back to the roundabout on Dayton Parkway, and ultimately presumably out to I-94, without entering any of the residential areas. There probably would not be any condition, connections of that to the south, and then south of that roadway would kind of be the delineation that, the road to the north and the wetlands to the west, that would be the buffer, if you will, between the residential and the industrial.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a consensus from the council to support the layout of the building as the developers proposing versus requiring it to flip?
I don't see the reason to flip it personally.
Mayor, members of council, I'm going to, I'll voice my opinion here, because I think it's pretty important that we do flip the building, and the reason for that is because of the commercial area across, across the wellend. If I'm a commercial district area and I want to be a commercial area, commercial business in this city, I want, I don't want to look at truck parking. I want to look at a nice building. And if I'm going to put a commercial business across the wellend, and maybe make, maybe we can make a trailer on that wellend to really make it a nice area for commercial businesses to go there and take a walk around. You don't want to look at truck parking or have anything to do with truck parking. Typically, you want to look at another business. I know that it costs a little more money for the developer. In my position here, I think it's important that we look at the city overall and not just what the developer can make and what the landowner can make. It's important for those things too, but it's also important what the city looks like in 50 years from now, when this building's still standing here, not, not. So I think it's really important that we look at what that layout looks like, because just putting truck parking wherever isn't going to, isn't the answer for this one specifically. We did that with Opus, and I think we may or may not think that that could be a good idea, could not be a good idea, but now that has truck parking that backs up to our main road, that every time you drive down that roadway, what do you see? You see truck parking. You don't see any cars. You don't see any business. You see truck parking. And that's extremely critical, whether there's landscaping or not. Landscaping can come down, trees can fall over, and now it's back to the same spot where we're looking at a building with 75 truck stalls on the backside of it and a commercial district across the way, when we want to have a, you know, we want to have some restaurants in town, we want to have a, you know, some sort of business in town that's commercial. I think it is important that we look at that more than just, yep, sounds good, because the developer wants it. But that's my opinion.
Well, my, can you guys come back up?
Sure.
I thought, well, so to, to rotate this, it's not a matter of rotating it, right? It's a matter of making
There's some fill. There's needed.
Three buildings.
Yeah, it's, it's a very large cost. Likely the project won't be feasible if we flip it. That's, that's where it's at.
Do we have a picture of the Cubes building parking lot? There's parking lot all the way around that building.
Yeah.
So I don't see the...
No, there's truck parking going down the north side. On the side that faces Dayton Parkway is just residential or what do you want to call it, a worker parking, passenger parking.
So what you're saying is you have truck parking on the north side of the Cubes building, but truck parking on the north side of this building is not okay?
No, the truck parking on the north side of the Cubes building is hidden by a 30-foot hill.
Yeah, there's Birmingham.
There's a Birmingham on the side of the road.
We would also do on our side along Dayton Parkway.
I mean, I think what I'm hearing is it's not so much, it's not so much if it was just this building and, and the north just stayed agricultural land, we didn't, it won't matter. It's, if that north area is going to be commercial. And I think then to me, the bigger question is, and I think this is, and I don't know where the appropriate conversation for this is, but commercial can mean so many different things. And so are we talking commercial, like restaurants, coffee shops, you know, like places with a lot of like your regular resident, like a neighborhood commercial, or are we talking commercial, kind of almost more business parky, right? So, because depending on which way you go, yes, if I was a coffee shop, I am not going to want to open my cute coffee shop where I want outdoor seating, where the big view is a bunch of semis. Like, that's not going to do it. But if I am, you know, a tax account, you know, if I'm an accountant and I just have people coming in for tax prep, like, like that's, like what I want to see is going to be very different. And so, and, and really ultimately, how this building gets laid out is probably going to dictate what kind of commercial that becomes. And so I do, I, I appreciate that, and to me, that's part of that bigger zoom out of this area. So that commercial, I think we have to decide what kind of, like, I think we need to be able to like, to put, we need to have more categories than just commercial. We just have such, our categories are so broad, and it can mean so many things. And I'm totally okay with it if we mean one thing, and I'm not okay if, if we mean a different kind of commercial. And that, to me, is that larger zoom out conversation about this area and about like, are we having apartment buildings? Because if we're having apartment buildings, then things like coffee shops make more sense, right? Like restaurants, coffee shops make more sense next to apartment buildings. And then, no, they don't want to look at trucks, but, and that's going to be more industrial, and then those commercial are more just not, and again, I don't have the vocabulary for it, which is why I'm kind of struggling, but if it's not like your everyday, kind of just coming in to, to enjoy yourself, kind of commercial, or then it doesn't matter so much. But like, that's why we have to zoom out and make this conversation, because that would totally change my answer to this, whether or not it has to flip or not.
Yeah. Again, who gets back to this, this area is unplanned essentially.
Yes.
Yep.
And if we don't do anything, it's going to plan itself without our say.
Yep.
That's where we're at right now.
Yeah, so that's, so that's why I have a hard time. Like, we need to figure this out, so we need to sit down and like today, so you guys can make your plans, because we need to have an answer, so you can have an answer.
They need an answer.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, they need an answer. To me, the, to me, the more, the exquisite commercial you're talking
Yeah.
is more of a mile, less than a mile away from here, is the so-called city center in 2080.
Well, we killed that. Well, that sort of died, so.
That might happen. I mean, we just don't know. Um, I don't see the, I don't see the need for it.
Were you going to say something?
No, I, I guess I weighed in. I, I don't have that big a problem with the building as it's, as it's planned, because of the neighborhood that it's in.
Yep.
You know, the Cubes is trucks. Next to that is trucks. Next to that is trucks. We've kind of established what's going to be in that part of this, this area, this industrial area. I think it, I think those are valid points about what kind of commercial goes in those other spots. Is it more, you know, resident oriented, or is it more serving the, the population of people that are in business around it? And I don't think we know those answers.
I can see, I can see a fire station in the corner, the, the northwest corner. The, to me, that's the ideal spot for it. But anyway.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, our firm also worked with Madhu, the landowner, and we prepared the EAW. And so at that time, and of course, it could change, but they were more interested in gas station, fast food, and so on. I would also point out, this, this pond, it's kind of deceiving. It's like 500 feet across there. It's... pond, it's kind of deceiving. It's like 500 feet across there. It's almost a small lake. It's a long ways away and quite a separation between whatever the commercial becomes and, and what the industrial use is. So I think there is an opportunity for trail around the pond and some walkability as well as screening. And, and, you know, it remains to be seen what type of commercial that is, but because it's a long Dayton Parkway, it's likely going to attract businesses that want the trips and the visibility of what's going to be a busy road. And so it, it may not be high amenity. It might be more service oriented, like we say, or the gas station or fast food or something that relies on those trips.
And we, we tried to include some renderings here in your package as to kind of what that view would be with the berm. And I think the truck, at least the loading docks are for sure going to be screened. And what you'll see is maybe the windows and the, the building up high in the future.
Is that landscaping along the north side of where the, the truck docks would be, is that a berm or is that more or less just vegetation?
Yeah, it will be a slope up from the basin to the truck court elevation. So it's, it's elevated along the truck court and also bermed along Dayton Parkway. The other vegetation and trees will be on pond berms and so on. So there, there's actually a lot of opportunities for that screening in a, in a number of ways on this site.
So anybody want to talk about the building orientation? Are we still good? Okay. Take from that, then we'll all still do that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Marsha.
Just a note on Sarah's point about the orientation of the building and the broader conversation with the Planning Commission. That area to the north of these properties can certainly be a part of that conversation on whether that remains commercial based on the alignment or not. So just a note.
So I'm looking at the plans and I know they said the commercial part was going to be delayed, but they didn't say for how long. And I guess what? There's a gas station and it's right next to a holding pond and right across the street.
There's not, there's a comment about a gas station.
It's, yeah.
It's not a gas.
It's on the plan and it even says the, has the canopy there. But anyways, it's right next to a holding pond and right across the street. Guess what? Houses with wells. It's the same situation that we're facing now. So that makes four gas stations proposed already. We already have four. How many gas stations does this city need? And I know that liners on those ponds don't work. I know that for a fact. Those ponds are going to leak and the gas that washes out with every rain and every snow goes right into that pond and then right into people's wells. It's going to happen. So you guys got to think about how many gas stations does this city really need?
Thank you. Okay. All right. Looks like we can. Monk item cheese. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the final plat for the Parkway neighborhood and I'm just going to refer to this as the first edition. There will be at least three that are planned. This project that the council has looked at for, I'll say, the better part of two years. The first edition is specific to the final plat for the 180 unit apartment building. In November 2024, the council did approve the preliminary plat as along with the comprehensive plan amendment, the rezoning in EAW and the site plan for the apartment building. So tonight, it's not so much about the building or the layout. It's more about the final plat itself with the development agreement. So I don't have a whole lot of details on the plat, this, other than this is what it looks like and, and all of its black and whiteness. Are there questions specific about the plat? Otherwise, I'm assuming that there's going to be some questions about the development agreement.
I don't.
Zach, if you want to.
Yep. Again, so the, um, the development agreement for the Parkway neighborhood includes 180 unit apartment building. Project two, which is not being discussed tonight, but it will be in the future, is a 273 unit apartment in townhomes. When the developer secures and to build 150 units as part of either project one or project two within the DA8, it's noted that the city will build the highlighted road, which is the road from Dayton Parkway down to the edge of the Roeburg parcel or the parcel that the developer is developing on for a cost of roughly $3 million. That is a guesstimate. We have no idea if that's right, wrong or different. We've done some very, very preliminary engineering on it, but that is it.
Is that including the stoplight?
That does not include the stoplight. So the stoplight would be additional to that $3 million. And the developer pays the full development LOC escrows fees and charges for project one. So they are going to assist us with completing that project by putting some money toward the project overall with those fees and charges that we are using for development. You have another, is there any slides?
Are we, Jason, are we pretty confident in that $3 million number?
We went through to check it at a high level and we did kind of a distribution of what the developer had for costs across the entire project. So I would not say we have high confidence in it. It does seem like a reasonable estimate though.
Is the, the Shani Group property listed in this development agreement because of the piece that crosses that corner?
That is correct. It is listed in there only because it's clipped by the public roadway. Otherwise, it would not be listed. It has no part of this development agreement besides being listed. And I think it's on page one, I believe, just because it's noted that the roadway does go through their parcel.
And they knew it was coming, right?
Yes.
Whoever built it.
Does this, I know this isn't a significant piece of it, but does the Shani Group own that property to the west?
They do. Yep. So we've had preliminary conversations with them. If we built the road, would you give us the right of way? That's been the essential agreement for them is that they would give us the right of way if we were able to put the road.
Okay. And they have the ability to say that?
Yes. It is their property.
After everything was said and done, we, we, it still looks not much different than the original.
Not, no, not much.
With the tax abatement.
Yeah, no. Yeah. So there's no tax abatement with this project. It was originally talked about to have a tax abatement, which is what you heard the hearing on earlier that was canceled. There was no longer a need for a tax abatement with us constructing the roadway to the Roeburg parcel. So that is why the kind of the flip flop there. This does get total cash flow for the city in a more positive light quicker, which is why it was proposed by city staff to go in this direction with some help from city council, obviously, as I was going through the process. So I appreciate the feedback.
And funding for that $3 million was.
Yeah. So.
Ish, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be ish, $3 million. We'll use the word ish. That'll be used as a bond. So you see the bond come forward. The reason why the bond is being used is because then we can utilize it for tax abatement. Essentially, what that means is that we'll just capture the taxes within this area that's south of the roadway to pay for that road. So whether that's from the Shani Group, from this project in front of you, a more different project that comes on the south side of the, of the parcel, this area, would pay for that roadway.
Okay. And others is.
Yeah. Others has run the numbers on it as much as we possibly can. 150 units, I think is our, kind of our minimum percentage wise of how much the bond would be able to be funded for and how much we could fund. If it, if it is more than that, obviously, then we are cash flow positive on the process. We are technically cash flow negative if it's only 150 units. We felt that it was important that we had some sort of number in there for the developer. We worked back and forth with the developer. I think he'd argue back and forth that maybe I didn't use a high enough or I didn't use a low enough number, but I said 150 seems like a good number for us. It covers roughly 80%. If he builds exactly 150, it's 80% of the bond payment every year for taxes. So the difference is like $20,000.
And we know we're going to get.
If there's anything else on the south side of the park, it doesn't matter if it's this project or in the Shani Group or anywhere else, it will be put towards this project.
And is there, I know we're not approving anything for project two tonight, but is there, is there any commitment on timing as to when that one would, would go?
You will see that in April.
Okay.
No, no full commitment, but it is going to Planning Commission in April.
April.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff?
Okay.
Okay. I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Alders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Suppose, say no.
I'm glad nobody mentioned any gas station, anyone.
Here he finds his ear. Item H. Yep. Because it already just went so fast. Seriously, it's a pleasure, a pleasure. Look at these nails clean.
Hey.
As a whistle.
We don't have to wonder.
Saying that one, look at my toes.
I do have a toddler.
Braid the hair, ponytails clips.
Yep.
If that is what stands between you and your masculinity, then you have some other issues.
Yep. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. From previous conversations with the Planning Commission and City Council, there was expressed interest to expand the public hearing notification requirements for the mailing procedure when the Planning Commission has public hearings for development. So essentially, that is what is, the ordinance amendment is in front of you today, would be a change to expand the area from the 500 feet as defined in the ordinance currently to 1320 feet or a quarter mile. With that, I'll answer any questions.
So I have, I have a couple of things bouncing in my head. One, when I was at the League of Minnesota Cities Training, I was talking to people about this kind of issue. They were talking about putting signs up on properties in question just to help notify people who are, because there is, no matter where we stop it, there's going to be that person who's like, how come my neighbor got it and I didn't? So I think, are we in progress on doing something like that as well?
That we do do that.
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor, members of council, we have those already secured and ready to go. So we just didn't do it for a while with public works. I've talked with Marty and he's able to bring those out when we have conversations. So planning and public works work together to get those out.
Awesome. And then my second question is, the issue is ultimately around development, right? When we have these large swaths of land. And that was one of the things we brought up is like the, the, the state statute about the size limit is really thinking about like when you're in a subdivision and someone wants to put in an access, no, an accessory structure. And do we really need to notify out a quarter mile? And I would say, no, you do not. But when you're developing over 100 acres, then, then it makes more sense. And I believe, and again, I, I believe there was a question like, we can't distinguish, but could we not do something as a percentage of the land involved? So like, we will send, like, I know it would involve a little bit of math every time, but, um, like, so the, the footage out would be a percent of the acreage involved. So if you have a quarter acre little lot, your little house in your subdivision and you're going to Planning Commission to get, you know, an approval to build an extra shed, then X percent of that is just really your immediate neighbors. So that's all that this impacts. But if you're doing 100 acres, right, X percent of that is much bigger because it is bigger and it's going to affect a lot more people. If this is doable for the city, I'm fine with it. But I just, I want to recognize that it is ridiculous for some projects, right? Like, this is absolutely asinine to send it a quarter mile out for some of the things that come through Planning Commission. It is not when you're talking about developing 100 acres. Absolutely, I'm, I'm fine with that. Or can we, or can, or is it possible to separate out, development specifically gets this and like some of the other things that come that necessarily get notifications, don't necessarily need to have this quarter mile radius?
Yeah, I think that that conversation was had a little bit at the Planning Commission meeting, but it was more specific to, can we pick and choose between what types of variances and conditional use permits get the expanded area?
Yeah.
But conditional use permits and variances cover a lot of different topics.
Oh, yeah.
But I can't give you a confident answer tonight.
Okay.
But I can certainly look into whether this can be limited to preliminary plat applications or, or something along the lines of that because that's really going to cover the, these large developments. I don't know if that's possible off the top of my head, but I can certainly look into that if that would be something, if you'd want to bring back the scale of this a little bit. This item can certainly be tabled and brought back to you after I take a look at it further.
Well, like I said, for development, I absolutely like this size, right? Like, this is appropriate when you are developing 100 acres. It's just, I'm thinking about some other things that come through Planning Commission that we really don't need to notify an entire, like quarter mile away that someone, you know, wants to put up.
A CUP for an accessory.
Yeah. Or like, I want to have four chickens instead of three chickens. Do we really need to tell everyone a quarter mile from you that you want to have four chickens instead of three chickens? Like.
Councilmember Van Hessen, I think staff would concur with that sentiment.
Yeah. So if there is a way, whether it is, you know, plating, like if they're specific or like I said, a percentage of the property involved, that would immediately like, smaller properties would be smaller, 100 acres or pl, like you're just going to get bigger. That, that was a way, because I did hear, I did hear that conversation that you weren't sure if you could distinguish. And I thought maybe if we tied it to the size of the acreage, that's a way we could, in some way, because, you know, you're not developing a quarter acre. So that's just, doesn't require that level of communication.
So just to add a little bit of context, it's difficult for us and probably not fair for us to predict what people care about.
True.
You know, the Parkway neighborhood, which now I don't remember how many acres, it was under 100 acres. No one showed up at the last public hearing we had. The most popular public hearing or highly attended public hearing we had was for a single family lot in the last year.
That's true. That's true. Yeah.
Which we couldn't, didn't predict.
No.
The extended building or the extended business?
Dogs.
Or the dogs.
The dogs.
Ooh.
That was a packed room. So that's valid.
To Sarah's point though, we, the language in here is, is a little bit inconsistent to my eyes on who's, what we require for which kind of permit. So I think that should be looked at again to be a little more consistent. You know, in the, in the one section, it talks about a certified list instead of mailing labels and names and addresses, all property owners within this distance. In the, in the preliminary concept, it's names and addresses on mailing labels. And then what was?
I think I know what you're getting at with, I think the section of the administrative subdivision is still limited to that 500 feet as those lot splits that are consistent with the zoning ordinance don't require a public hearing and can be reviewed and approved administratively. So I think that was why that I, I had left that one as is.
Okay. It just seems to me that we're a little, and maybe there's good reason for that, right? But when I read them, there, it's a different set of requirements somewhat from, for each kind of application. And, you know, I think that there is a, a place for what Sarah is saying is, you know, how do we, how do we sort of remove the, the minor changes? And I guess to John's point, you know, how do we know what people are going to get revved up about? And some of these are unexpected. What, and just because of our lack of vision or whatever, we don't know what the local concern is going to be until we hear it. I, I feel like we've been under notifying people for a long time and so I'm very much in favor of this 1320 square foot or foot radius around the project. And how do we make it not painful for somebody that wants to, you know, do an accessory building that hardly anybody cares about?
I don't know how you'd decide that.
Yeah. I don't know either. Mayor, members of council, one thing I want to mention, and we did track the cost difference between the 500 foot and the 1,0320. I think it was fourfold more expensive to do the 1320 than it was to do 500 because of the bigger circle you touch, way more properties. Now, that doesn't mean much when you're looking at fourfold, but if it's $500 worth of postage for each one of these things to go out, we're going to have a ton of money in postage and that budget's going to go skyrocketing to the cost. So just want to make sure everyone's aware that there is cost. So just wanna make sure everyone's aware that there is costs involved with them. Some of them can be attributed back to development, but not all of them can be, so.
So, do we know a way average for public hearings this year? I would guess it's like twenty-ish.
I would guess, I guess it's probably pretty close.
So.
Say three a month.
Three a month? Yeah, yes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, question.
Thirty-six a year then?
So looking at the ordinance, it seems like for me, the ones where we need more communication are for the PUDs, right? Planning and Developments. For condition, uh, conditional use permits is a question mark for me. So that, that's, that's to me the big question mark.
That's the big one, yeah.
But PUDs, absolutely. I would say the zoning ordinance and map amendments, that's kind of another question mark, but I tend to lean to bigger on that one cause it has more impact on more people. Again, someone wanting five chickens instead of three doesn't really have a giant impact, but like changing the zoning, that has a big impact on how I can sell my property. So if we can, and then preliminary concept plan, obviously. So if it is possible, since we already have those broken out in their own subsections to distinguish those, like, let's do that, and then maybe, maybe leave the CUPs alone, because, back to the dog one, most of those people did not get a letter from us, right? I mean, we had people coming from literally across the country, that one lady came in from Denver. We did not mail a letter to Denver, right? So she found out about it in some other process. So, yes, some things really get a lot of people up and, and will have a lot of attendance, but, um, and that's, to my point, also about having the signage in the yard, like that's, that's where I think the other ways of communication come into play for like the CUPs. But I do think the PUDs, the Developments, zoning, and Plats, those I think need to be this bigger one. But I think maybe if we can pull back and just not, and do a slightly smaller for the CUPs.
Would you suggest leaving it as it is at three fifty or five hundred?
Yeah, cause that's already higher than state statute.
CUPs and IUPs.
Yeah, that would be my, if we can, I think, I think that seems like a reasonable compromise.
It does, I think it has.
Yeah, when you're saying PUD, are you meaning IUP?
No, the planning unit development. So when you're looking at this, there's like the different subsections. So subsection four is procedure for processing a planning and development, right? That's a development of some sort, that's, like, that's not gonna be a small little quarter acre. So that needs to be, I want that to have the bigger circle. That's what I meant by PUD.
Yeah, I'm just, when you say that, then I'm not getting the distinction between, now if somebody comes in with an R three development, why is that less important?
I'll just note that if it is an R three development, a lot of these applications come concurrently. So if a rezoning application is concurrent with a subdivision application, the stricter would apply for the zoning ordinance, so they would be notified that larger scale because of the preliminary plat, if that's essentially what you're getting at.
Yeah.
And like I said, we can certainly take a look at that and bring this back and see if there's an opportunity to just make a distinction.
Sure, so to that point then, PUD, R three, whatever, because they're all coming with a preliminary plat, that's where this would capture.
Yeah, they would get them there.
All right.
But I'm, I'm also thinking, cause the dog night was also the chicken night, right? Like, we don't need to tell a quarter mile radius that, that the person with three chickens was asking for six chickens, so.
Last year, we, you considered rezoning a property on Elm Creek Road because of the, it was A one, but it was a two acre property or less. Yeah, yeah, and that wouldn't have, because it wasn't a preliminary plat, it would've just fell under that five hundred square foot and not have to.
Would that have been a zoning ordinance one?
It would be the map amendment, so that would, where the distinction would come in, where if it's just a specific map amendment, maybe that can stay at five hundred feet, but if it's preliminary plat and rezoning, then that larger area would be notified.
That makes sense to me.
Well, and to the, to the point about the city, at a certain point, there's gonna be less and less large area, you know what I mean? Like, we're gonna, as time goes on, we're gonna get more to the, I would like an accessory building, I would like extra chickens. Like, that's what it's gonna be, and it will bring the cost down, right? Like, we're only gonna have so many big things that have the large ticket for the mailings, and at a certain point, we're just not gonna have that many anymore. So, it's not like this will be on a huge budget thing for the rest of time, so, cause there's just not gonna be, you know, as many once we get built out.
So are we?
They're gonna re, rewrite it.
Staff would entertain a motion to table.
Well, I'm gonna push, is there, do you wanna study this more, or do you?
I don't think we need to. It's just a matter of.
Yeah.
If you're, I mean, we can rewrite it, you're not gonna see it before signing it. So.
What do you mean?
You're just saying, we could, we could pass it with amendments.
What you want to change, so I guess, for my clarity, the three, yes, the three hundred and fifty feet would be for conditional use permits.
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, I'm sorry. Conditional use permits, interim use permits, rezoning, and I'm also, no, rezoning would be a quarter mile. How about site plan reviews? So this is for a commercial property, you know, I'm going.
You can use QuickTrip as an example, that was a site plan review, QuickTrip was a site plan review.
So it's high.
I like that high, that's quarter mile.
Higher, okay. Everything other than CUPs, IUPs, and zoning map amendment, no. CUPs and IUPs would be five hundred, everything else is a quarter mile.
Yeah, basically.
We just make that change.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that amendment, a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
Just as long as Marsha gets a notice if there's a gas station.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Others opposed say no. App motion carries five minutes.
Noted for the record, call Tom Brislonek, it's noted for the record.
Okay, on the item, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so this is a comprehensive plan amendment and a city code text amendment to add the A three district, or A three agricultural district. With the comprehensive plan amendment, what this is showing, to try to simplify it, the image on the left is the existing twenty forty future land use plan. What we're proposing to do is to take this shaded area and rename it or call it unsued low density residential interim use. It's kind of a, a long description. Because this is a change on the map, it does require, well, it's a change on the comprehensive plan map, it does require a comprehensive plan amendment, which was, once the council approves it, would have to be reviewed by the Met Council.
Can you go over that again? What, what are you saying is the, is the reason?
This area currently is kind of a mix of low density residential, rural estate, as well as master planned community.
Right.
This whole area would be changed from whatever it is shown over here to unsued low density residential interim use. So the intent here is that the city would allow unsued residential development at a density of four units per forty acres. And then otherwise, any development would have to comply with the city code, and then that gets into the city code amendment.
So why are we doing this?
Yeah.
It's a change.
We talked about just having it, leaving it sewed.
This is still guided as it is, right?
As sewed development, what we're changing it to is allowing an interim use as unsued.
Okay, we always have interim use, anybody could split it eighty into forty, right?
Yes, but we don't have too many eighties that can be split, so we're talking about splitting it into acre and a half.
I get that. Why is it any different than what we do today other than the numbers?
Because it's unsued.
That's not how we talked about it.
Okay.
We talked about setting it up so that theoretically, draw it out so that, I mean, we told this individual to draw it out so that a hundred years from now, it might be sewed.
Yes.
Doesn't mean it'll ever happen, but it might, it might happen.
So we're still guiding it as sewed?
Yes.
So why, so what I'm getting at is, we can do an eighty to a forty today without a comp plan amendment. And why would we want to do a comp plan amendment if we're gonna let it go to a forty to a twenty, or a twenty to a ten?
So an eighty could be split into forty without having to go through the subdivision process.
It could be an administrative split.
Yes, but like if you do forty into four tens, you can't do that today.
Why?
Because the minimum lot size is forty acres.
Well, we're, okay, but we're changing that.
Changing that.
Right. I, I don't know how else I can explain this.
So can I, can I ask a question? Why aren't we just changing A ones to the minimum lot size as ten acres?
That was the direction of the council.
I know, but like, would that get a, would that, would that make you feel that you had to do all these things? If we just said, okay, A one, minimum lot size, ten acres, done.
It would make the city code amendment much easier, it would still require a comp plan amendment.
Why?
I, I'm gonna say it's for the same reasons of.
I haven't heard a reason yet.
I haven't heard a reason.
And, and you know what, this is, this is starting to get old. There's a problem here. I think you don't like where we wanna go with this.
I don't disagree with where you wanna go, I'm, I'm following the direction I have, the interpretation I have from the Met Council that this does require a comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay, and if they told you that it required, you know, approval by them, would you agree with that? You wouldn't. The comp plan amendment will. Why on earth would we add a comp plan amendment, something we don't need to do? This is what I'm not understanding what's going on here. Why are we doing this comp plan amendment? Instead of, again, all I gotta look at is, we can take an eighty to a forty today, or a one twenty to three forties. We don't have to change the comp plan. We don't have to do anything special. Why is it that suddenly if we go down to ten or below that we, we need to do this?
I, I'm stretching my memory a little bit. So if I remember correctly, so the Met Council is supportive of ten acre lots. If we go less than ten acre lots, it's inconsistent with how the, the Met Council is, is written for our designated community, type of community.
But if we take a ten acre lot and, and guide it for sewed land, we don't need no change, that's what we're getting at.
Say that again?
If we take a, a forty acre lot.
Yep.
Make four tens out of it, but someday it might be fifty lots, we don't need to make any kind of a change.
Sure, but we're, we're not going in the direction of ten acre lots, we're going in the direction of less than ten acres.
And I, I, again, I hate to beat this dead horse, but for, for five years I've been bringing this up. Tell me the statute or the rule or something that says we can't go below ten. And I've never gotten that, when the Met Council was here, they couldn't give us that. We keep getting this ten number thrown out.
So I did ask the Met Council, so I think the other reason. Is it, it stems from a nineteen eighty eight plan, which I'm gonna guess nobody, probably no one at the Met Council, very few people were working there in nineteen eighty eight. So I think part of it is just the lack of institutional memory. It stems from a nineteen eighty eight plan, it's just been carried on since then of the ten acre lot rule.
And, and if our comp plan, here's, here's where I'm going with this. You do this, you, you set this in stone, and, and I would argue that, that, well, I'm not gonna go there. This gets the Met Council into our business. I don't know that we're in violation of diddly, and in fact, I know we're not in violation of our comp plan. So why do we wanna do this? I, I, I need some.
Yeah, I'll try to chime in and, I'll probably, I'll probably be between you two of where we're at with things here, so I'm gonna try to do my best. So the problem that we have is, Met Council's already in our business, so to answer the first question.
They are.
They are more in our business than we ever wanted to be because they treat our business as it goes out the city, so they have to be in our business. But the biggest thing that we have is that we can't develop the property, anything other than what it sits today, to get what we want to have without having some sort of interim use. And that was what has been guided, I don't know what that means, that's just kind of been the term that they used when we talked with them, was the interim use.
Yes.
And so we had to come up with a way of what does interim use mean? And so what we, what was derived from it is we have, in the current comp plan, we have a hundred and sixty acres that we can derive to be what I'm gonna call rural estate, even though it's not technically rural estate anymore. We have a hundred and sixty years, a hundred and sixty acres we can designate for that. The problem is that this is two thousand acres?
Twenty eight hundred.
Twenty eight hundred acres, so we, we're designated twenty eight hundred acres to say, it can develop something now, but it will be something else in the future. And so because we are changing that one sixty to twenty eight hundred, that's the problem we have. If we wanna make it only one sixty, which is what we currently have designated today, we don't have to do any of this, we could just.
But that was a different designation, that one sixty was for sewed large lots.
Um, yeah, it was for, I thought it was for unsued large lots, maybe it was.
Sewed large lots, and we can still do that.
We can, yeah. I don't know a lot of the answers here back and forth, but I know that we have to do something with the Met Council because if we approve a development, it's just in general, approve a development that's less than ten acres, as a lot that's less than ten acres and it's not sewed, I can guarantee you that Met Council's gonna be down our throat.
Yeah, and I wanna know what the mechanism is that there would be.
And I don't know, I'm gonna look at our attorney and go, I, I don't know that answer, I'm gonna look at her and go, hopefully you know what Lake Elmo did, so I mean, I don't know.
Amy, you can chime in here, but I've been asking everybody under the sun, and nobody can tell me what that is. All they will do is say, well, Met Council doesn't like you going under ten. Okay, that's very special.
You're not gonna like this, but I don't know the answer to the ten.
I'd expect that, cause I think the deal is there is.
No one's ever asked me this question before. And so, I mean, part of, I think part of what we get stuck on is what is just general authority of the Met Council. And, I mean, and, and seeing the packet that John included, the Lake Elmo case.
Yep. Which is completely not applicable, they threw out the whole thing.
Well.
The Lake Elmo case was, they just said, Met Council, you have no authority here at all.
And that's not what we're saying.
Okay, so, but I'm just, that's, I mentioned it just because it's, that's where the, the tension comes of, you know, where does the Met Council have its authority? It's in the statutes, it says, as, as the Supreme Court has, has concluded that, you know, the Met Council has the authority to get in a city's business.
They do.
Because of, because of the, the, the structure of the statutes when it comes to managing.
Yep.
The outflow, so to speak.
They, they certainly do, I just don't understand why we would invite it.
So I have a question, if we changed A one and just made A one so the minimum lot size was smaller, would we have to do a comprehensive plan amendment?
I'd have to think about it more, it, it would affect the master plan area.
Why?
We would not require a master plan for any development, if you're taking forty acre and splitting it into ten, the intent right now is that it has to be master planned. We wouldn't do that for ten acre lots. Yeah, that's a minor change.
But why would, I guess my question is, if we changed our current A one district so that the minimum lot size was ten acres instead of forty acres, would that require a comprehensive plan amendment?
It wouldn't require it if we made it an A three district and the minimum lot size be ten acres. The problem is that we're trying to go less than ten acres, which is what the guided number from council's been using. I know the mayor and I go back and forth on, ten acres, not ten acres, ten acres, not ten acres.
Show me that ten and write.
The reason why is because whatever ten acres is, it's a, you call it a magic number, yeah, you can call it whatever you want. The reason for that is if, if we make the A three district a minimum lot size of ten acres, it's no problem, that, we don't need this. It's because we're trying to go less than ten acres is the problem.
Okay, so now they've said that, if we go, if we're at ten acres, you're saying we don't need this overlay. If we get a nine point nine, we need this, why?
I don't know, that's the magic number.
Somebody better know, cause we're doing this.
This is the same difference as one thousand three twenty or five hundred. Nobody knows the number, we just pick a number for public hearing notices. You're just, you're just picking up one, one out five oh one.
I'm just saying that there's only downside to doing this.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, I just wanna pride the other side of the thing.
The, the whole business with, this is the guidance, we're not asking to re-guide this property, any of these properties.
No.
We're saying keep them low density or, or whatever they are currently guided, but instead of being forty, there's something else, whatever that is.
Right now, it's guided for sewer development as two acres a lot, and what we're saying is we're going to allow unsued development at ten acre densities.
But that's not the final use.
But that's not what it says in the comp plan currently.
We don't have interim use in the comp plan.
No.
Right? Again, we can take an eighty and go to forty, right?
Yes, but we're going less than forty.
I understand that.
So, I think your opposition is.
There's no guarantee for it to be sewored then, and so that's what the Met Council... There's no guarantee now!
There's no guarantee now.
I live on 18 acres and that, and I will be over my cold dead body before I put sewer on there, and I will probably be the person calling. You'll be like, hey, you want to put a park here? And if not, I'll sell it to Elm Creek Park Reserve. There will not be subdivisions on my land, period. It doesn't matter. We can't promise any of this will be sewored.
And I don't disagree it's gonna be harder to sewer in the future. I don't think any of us would disagree with that. But in the meantime, it gets used instead of somebody having to sit on their land. It's just that, you know, this is not the only problem I have with this thing. But I just don't understand the need for this, and to me, it, it, there's...
Is it, is it specific, the, the comp plan amendment? It's not the zoning thing?
Correct.
The zoning thing we can get into, but...
We do not need to have a comprehensive plan amendment for this.
I don't believe we need amendment for this, and I don't understand what, I actually haven't heard a reason why. I keep hearing the 10 brought up, and I don't see the 10 anywhere in any statute, anything.
Because we are not changing the comprehensive plan.
We can, if you'd like, we can table this. We can have the Met Council come in and explain.
No, 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 we don't want to fight trouble.
That's the pro, that's the whole point is, we don't want their involvement.
And they will say, yes, we need it.
And I don't really care what they have to say.
Even though they won't tell us why.
Yeah.
We, we had this meeting, John, you were there.
Yep.
Right? Did she talk in a circle or not?
I feel like we're talking in a circle. You can deny the comprehensive plan amendment.
That's a, yeah, that's what we, my suggestion is, a staff would be deny the comprehensive plan amendment and adopt anything else you look at.
Anybody else want to speak on this? Specifically to the comp plan amendment. Let's talk about that first.
I don't feel we need a comp plan amendment.
Okay.
I don't either. I don't think we should ever bring it up again.
Any comp plan amendment ever?
Well, no, if it's, if I can, a reason, a very clear reasoned reason.
Well, I think it makes sense to me to not bring it to them. If we're, if we're not changing the final use. And if we looked at current land use, this is practically all A1, right?
The majority of it.
And so that's, and so what we're talking about is what we're doing with agricultural, and whether we call it a change A1 or an A3 to make it more clear, we're not, we're not changing the future land use piece of it at all. And that's really where the Met Council weighs in. You know, I guess what my question would be, because I, I get stuck on the 10 acre piece too. I can't find it written anywhere. And the statute that's referenced is, is really vague. The state statute is really vague about what, you know, it says have a plan.
The statute requires the Met Council to have a plan, and they can do what they want.
Right.
And what they want is the, goes back to the 10 acres. So you're not gonna find 10 acres in statute.
No, but they imply that it is.
Oh, so they get to just make up what they want?
Yeah, so, well, I, I guess my question really is then, we, we do this without the comp plan amendment. We changed the zoning, we added A3 district. What's our risk?
Is that how you want to do the motion? Because that's how I word it. We're gonna give you a direction on which direction to go, and then we'll expect you to go in that direction.
Yep.
Yeah.
It'll go as.
Well, I have a hard time seeing that sometimes.
Sure.
Stephanie?
Yes, sir.
You on the fence here?
I like clear cut borders and lines, and I feel like there are none.
Yep.
Well, I don't want to go to, I don't want to go to them and ask the question.
No.
Because then you're asking for trouble.
Well, and they're gonna, they've already been here. They've already just...
Right, yes. But with no reasoning.
And, but, yeah, that's my hangup. Now, when the 2050 comp plan gets submitted, they will require an IUP at this point, which, which is an interim use plan. And then we'll have to do something in it that, so that they can stamp it off. But we're not in 2050 right now, and we didn't have an IUP required. We don't have an IUP in there, and this sticks one in there, so...
Unnecessarily.
In my opinion, unnecessarily. All right.
So I, I have a question about procedure here. What is the procedure if we want to say no to the comprehensive plan amendment, but we want to create a new zoning district?
You would just make the motion to approve the A3, well, A3 district without making a comprehensive plan adjustment.
Well, it's too...
Yes.
Yep.
So that's the motion I'll make.
That's the motion.
Well, as written?
No, we still need to talk about it. But I just want to make sure we can do that tonight. Okay, so now we have to talk about the actual plan of the zone.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
I have to bring it up.
We're talking about the A3 district?
Well, yeah, the zoning. John, if you wanted, if you were gonna give a spiel on that, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so the A3 district, the intent, going back to the comp plan amendment, is that it identifies the area where the A3 district is applicable. So that's roughly 2,800 acres that's bounded by, you know, well, I don't, generally it's north of, um, South Diamond Lake Road and east of the eventual Zanzibar Dayton Parkway corridor. So that, that's the general intent here. Subdivisions would be able to, to happen for parcels that are 20 acres or more. So again, the intent is to have a, a gross density of one home per 10 acres or four homes per 40 acres. So you have to have 20 acres in order to split into two homes. As far as the minimum lot size, it would be one and a half acres. That's of high grounds, and the intention here is it's large enough that you can fit a house and two septic systems, a well, and an outbuilding. If you have 20 acres, then you'd have one acre and a half lot and one 18 and a half acre lot. You mix it up and, you know, mix and match however, whatever works for the situation. Realistically, it's going to be, every project is going to be different. So we have the Sheeney parcel, which, which the council has seen the concept plan for. That was 105 acres. The lots vary between, let me say, about four acres and 20 some acres. So large lots. We'll have another project that will come in where it will be acre and a half lot, and then a lot of farmland that's going to be preserved as farmland. So two kind of extreme examples. What else? So I guess a question, if, if the council is opposed to the comprehensive plan amendment, there's a few different design guidelines that are included in the A3 district that may not be applicable if you're not going to do the comp plan amendment. So, and that relates to items A through E as far as reserving land resources for efficient urban development. B is to identify land characteristics required to support future urbanizations. C is to allow no more than 25% of the developable area. I'm not gonna read through this, because...
Yeah.
They're all gone.
I'm sorry?
Were all A, B, C, D, E, Y, are any of them there?
Okay.
I'm asking, why? Because none of the other ones have that.
The intention here is if we're allowing interim subdivisions as unsued, is that we're providing, we're picking, the developer's gonna pick A through E1 or, or more of these to demonstrate how that development could be re-subdivided in the future once sewer is available.
So this is a, that A through E, it's not a all, it's a pick one?
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be one or more.
Okay, so C is the one I'm struggling with the most, I guess is around the 25%, but that's not a requirement. It could be one of these other things.
It'd be up to the council. So it's kind of like a PUD, but it's not, there's some flexibility, but it's not a PUD.
Okay.
You know, our three district has flexibility, but that also is not a PUD.
So it'd be specific to each project? We would decide which one of those the project aligns with, or...
Yes.
Develop it to align with one of A through E?
It, it's, you're gonna treat an acre and a half lot much differently than you would a 20 acre lot.
Correct.
Okay. I can't read through.
I guess my question is more about its location here, like, because none of the other districts have this A through E in this part of their ordinance, right? It's all just, so why does this one?
Because this is a unsued development as an interim use intended to be sewored in the future.
But, yeah, so you're thinking, for example, ghost planning.
Yeah, I mean, this text itself comes from the Metropolitan Council.
Yep.
This is almost like the Met Council's assurance that we're actually planning for it to someday be sewored. It's like the, we're doing this in the middle, but we are doing one of these A through E to show that we will eventually, or the ideas that it would get to that point.
Correct.
So it's, that, that's the purpose of this?
We're showing the intent of what the future is going to be.
Thank you. That was a more eloquent way of saying it.
And, and we're, I don't remember which one the ghost planning fell under. Was that A? I guess it doesn't matter.
It, it, yeah, it doesn't say ghost planning.
I guess I was kind of confused by this too. You're saying only one of these conditions need to be met.
That's not clear from this language.
No, it's, it doesn't say. It could be one or more.
Well, who gets to, to decide if it's one or more?
The council.
The council.
So I think we need to be clear that that's, this is an option list, much like the PUD requirements. You need to show evidence of one or more of these, or sometimes it specifies how many of this list you need to pick.
So in our eight, our three district, for, for example, it says pick one of five, one of these five items.
Right.
Or one or more of these five items.
Or showing public benefit that should justify a PUD or...
Sure, we, we can clarify that in the code. But I guess a question for the council of these five items, are you comfortable with these five, or, or do you want to change any of them or remove any of them?
I'd like to take out C, allow no more than 25% of the developable land in the project to be developed. I appreciate that it might be a pick one of, but the way that's worded, it is not a pick one of.
Yeah, well, I think that's the part that's, is key, is that how we're presenting this, this list.
Yes.
Because when I read it, I, I thought we have to meet all of these.
That's how it's worded. That's how it's written.
And if it's, if it's not that, then I have less trouble with, with any of them, including C, which was the most problematic for me. Because it could be because of topography that, you know, that there is a, that they're able to meet this because of the project they're presenting. So I wouldn't want to take that away as, as they're saying, we're, we're meeting C on this one because of how the, how the space lays out.
Yeah, yeah.
You could change the language to say the intent would be the gross density of four units per 40 acres, meeting one of the, one or more of the following guidelines. Instead of saying with the following guidelines, you'd say meeting one or more of the following guidelines.
That works better.
Better.
I could be okay with that.
Yeah, okay. The four units per 40. Now, I, I'm forgetting where it was, but I've seen the word cluster, and I started to oscillate, so walk me through that.
So we're not talking about cluster septic system, we're talking about...
Nope, that's not.
Clustering, clustering lots together.
Yep.
So if you have a 40, and you put all four houses clustered in one corner, and then you take the rest of the land and just, well, it's platted as an outlot, or it's a non-buildable, residentially buildable lot. That's clustering.
And which one does that fall under? Or is it a separate? It looked to me like a separate deal.
It, it is. You can interpret it under different, I mean, that could be A, it could be...
Why would we, what would be the point of that? That's why we tossed this thing out a year and a half ago. Clustering solves nothing.
I don't think you could do clustering with this development because of the minimum lot frontage and minimum lot width and such. I don't think, I don't think you could do clustering with what you're, like, you could do smaller lots, but you couldn't do, what you're looking at is like three half acre lots and one 37 and a half acre lot of whatever you're talking about. You wouldn't be able to do that with this one.
And, and who would own the outlot?
It's gonna, it'll be different in every project.
But it would be the original landowner, right? I mean...
More than likely.
Likely.
And, and so they haven't solved, yeah, I, I don't like clustering whatsoever. And again, I'm not quite sure what, what it was, what it was meant, or what it really boiled down to.
And just for clarity, we're, we're talking about clustering lots, not clustered septic systems.
I get, yep, clustered lots, yep. Yeah, the whole point of the large lots is people get to use large lots. That's the point. Because if you're clustering, now you got this 36 acre chunk that nobody gets to do anything with.
Yeah, I think the idea would be to have three smaller lots and one bigger lot or something like that. You know, three one acre lots and one 37 acre lot.
Do you want to increase the minimum lot size?
Well, we could get to that. I don't like the averaging of 10 either. I, I don't know. Anybody else speak to this?
I don't like, I don't like the averaging of 10. But that goes, the averaging of 10, but I think one and a half is too, like, it's too small.
I see you're gonna do that.
So, if you're, yeah, so like, if it's averaging of 10, then the 1.5 I can live with, I don't love, but I'd rather, in my perfect, in, in the world where I want everything and I don't have to ask anyone else's opinion, it's five acres. Like, that would be my, my minimum. I could get down as low as five. Why?
Yeah, why five?
Um, if I'm thinking about like, having a hobby farm and horses and other animals and chickens and being able to do what I want with also not impacting my neighbors, right? Like, I can, I can pretty much, you can do almost all the farming, all like the hobby farming you want, and yet not really impact a neighbor. Like, five acres just seems ideal in my, like I said, in my perfect world where I don't have to talk to anyone else. Backing off a little bit, I think I can definitely get by with three. Like, I'd be...
Three was my magic number.
Yes, and I, I'm, I'm fine with that. Like, I chose the argument, I have friends and family members who have three and have told me like, three is great for all the things they need. I'm like, okay. So, um, five is, five is my personal, but I can see three. So I'd be okay with three. I, I think one and a half is too small personally, but...
Yeah, when we had the 10, or if we're talking about the averaging of 10, we have, you know, little, little, big, big...
Giant, giant.
Then maybe the one and a half might make sense, but, yeah, I, I, I think if we're, depending where we go with this averaging. If we're gonna average 10, maybe we stick with the one and a half, but if we're gonna remove that, I think a bigger number is more appropriate.
So you're talking about the, on that grid, the minimum lot size of 1.5 net acres, having that be three instead of 1.5?
Yeah, and not net, just three acres. I wouldn't require the net anymore at that point. I would, personally.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you have to have three acres of, like, high usable ground, right?
Quality.
Yeah.
Is there consensus for three gross acres right now? I just, I kind of want to break this down into each other.
Well, is there a consensus to deal with the 10, averaging the 10? I don't, I don't want to average 10. I don't think we, I think that kind of tosses the, the whole point of this thing.
My understanding is that if we average at 10, that is current Met Council guidelines, so we can totally not, apparently. But that would make everybody happy, so to speak, and we could just move on with our lives, and then maybe come back to it at a future date. And if we push it lower than 10, that might get some people upset enough to go tattle, basically, and then we're gonna have people.
They don't know, I'm not too worried about them, I mean, they're, they'll, they'll know what we're doing, I'm not concerned about that. My, my concern is, is that.
So what is your average, then?
I'm not sure I have an average, I'm not sure I.
Just A3 is the minimum lot size is three acres, period, end of story.
That's, yeah.
And then?
I'd like to hear from other people, so.
I'm tired of the whole conversation.
Well, we keep, you know.
It never needed to be this complicated.
Nope.
But here we are.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject, that's a little off topic, it's taking you backwards a little bit, I, I understand. But in the time that you all have been talking, I've been researching, because as I say, no one's ever asked me this question before. And even when I saw it on the agenda, I didn't know this was going to be the question. So in my quick research, which admittedly is not completely thorough at this point, I believe that the 10 acres is the guideline, it's not a statutory requirement, as you all have been talking about. But it's a guideline that is sourced from the, the 2030 Regional Development Framework Plan that was published in 2007 by the Metropolitan Council, so.
Yes.
Again, quick research, I mean.
I think we have a copy of it.
You probably do, the, so the, the legislature gives Met Council the authority to make plans, and then they make their plans, and they set their guidelines, and they say, cities and municipalities in the metro, in the seven county metro area, this is what you have to live with, just like you all adopt your, your comprehensive plans. So it isn't specifically a statutory requirement, as you've been talking about, as you've been, as you already know. But I just, that's my, my quick research on where the 10 acres comes from, it's just, their guideline, that, you know, they make a plan, that requires you to make a plan, and it all kind of drills downhill from there. So if that helps at all.
So, a subset of that was their guidance on how to use property in the meantime, and they did talk about ghost planning, that was one of the things. They gave many examples of different, different types of usage, you could do some clustering, they were also showing how you would, if you got really regimented, it would just be a house on two and a half acres, two and a half acres, but it's all ghost plating. And we have that, I know, we've seen that before, so. We have with 10.
Well, you might not like this, but I kind of like the 10. And it's not, yes, and it's not because of the Met Council at all, it's in my mind that we, you know, one of the things that I felt like we set out to do with this is to allow large, larger lots.
Yep.
And, you know, I guess a large lot is, is a different thing to everybody, but I think that the averaging 10, and I'll point back to the, the concept plan that we saw, the Shani one, where they were able to make that work. Bearing sizes of lots, right, because of the, the way the land laid out, but they, they were able to average 10. In many ways would mimic the neighborhood that it's next to, and I think that, to the extent that we can, we should be allowing those larger lots.
Right, but you still wanted the averaging of 10?
That, that's what feels right to me. But I think having the minimum lot size be three, I'm good with that.
Well, I'm not sure I'd care, I'm not, I'm thinking I'd leave it at one and a half if we're gonna average 10. Because then, I don't know, I, then it seems like we're still averaging 10, so more, more restrictions isn't beneficial, I don't, I don't, where would you go with one and a half?
If we're averaging 10, if it's one and a half net, I'm okay if we're averaging 10. If we weren't averaging 10, then three would be my minimum.
Let's stick with the three.
Well, okay, what about the 10?
I'm fine with 10, and then.
Oh, wait a minute, okay.
I'm fine with 10.
Okay, so you want to average 10 and bump it up to three?
Yeah.
Please tell me you can get us out of this quickly.
I feel like it's one or the other, like, you can't have both, right? You need to go down to the one and a half, if you're gonna average 10, for the flexibility of you might have a lot that, in order to average it all out, it has to be substantially smaller than the other ones.
And now your one and a half can be net, that might be a two and a half acre parcel, but one and a half is buildable, is what you're saying.
Yep.
True.
That's fine, that's fine, I can live with that.
What do you want to do with the average? There's gotta be 10 or not, because you are gonna swing this.
Oh goodness, um, I think I like the idea of averaging 10.
Okay. All right, so what about the one and a half, you want to leave that then?
I think you need two at that point, like, if you go with three, I don't think it gives you enough, like, flexibility in how the lots are laid out.
Okay, so it looks like what we can get through is averaging 10 and one and a half, leaving the one and a half.
As it's written.
As it's written, yeah.
Yes.
Net, that way, if it's a two and a half acre lot, one acre of it is in a well and it's still one and a half.
Right.
Net acres.
Okay, so no changes as it's written on lot sizes and dimensions?
I think that, yeah.
That I was fine with.
Yeah.
Now you gotta make a motion.
Well, what about this other?
Unless you want to adjust anything else, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm still confused about, like, the, the clustering, the outlots.
Where do you, where is that?
Was the clustering there, sorry?
Um, I don't have a page reference, but I've seen it in there.
Is it as a note, is it like, an example of one, maybe? Not necessarily like, this is what it has to be, but more or less, here's an idea?
And the critical issues.
The clustering, it's not requiring clustering, that gives the developer an option of putting the smaller lots in one area, and larger lots in another.
Oh, was this under the 25% of developable land? That's where it is, that's where I'm seeing it.
It's an example.
It's a general idea, maybe a possibility, not a requirement, it's more of an example.
Yeah, it'll still bother me, but as long as we're absolutely crystal clear that it's one of the above.
We would change that wording in the intent.
Yeah.
Like I noted.
Yeah.
Four units per 40 acres.
So.
Meeting one of the following guidelines.
Yes, as long as it says meeting one of the following. Why is it four units per 40 and not say two units per 20?
Or.
Or one units per 10?
I, I, I never understood that from when they, even when they, when, when we presented at the meeting.
For the four US per 40?
Yeah, why don't you say it's good average 10?
Yeah.
So, I think it's just more or less trying to put it into numerical terms, so that's why it's four per 40 versus saying averaging of 10. I don't know if that's just a term thing.
You can use either one.
You could use two per 20, you could use averaging of 10.
The problem is, in their documentation, when you look at their clustering, it's four out of 40. That's what I'm a little bit worried that somehow they think we're gonna cluster stuff.
Oh, sure.
So, I guess my question is, though, this implies that you have to have 40 acres to do A3. And if it says one unit per 10 acres, does that not open up someone with, say, 20 acres to apply for A3?
You can say two per 20.
Well.
Or you could say an average of 10, doesn't matter, but they're all the same technical terms, just what you write in.
Well, no, it changes who can apply for this.
Not necessarily, because you could be four, four per 40 and say, I have 20 acres, I want to do a four per 40 development. We'd say, okay, sounds good, you get two units. Which of the ones voted on that? But if you have 19.9, you can't do it.
Right.
I know, I can't do this, I have 18 point something, I have actually 17.85, I believe, so I'm out, but.
Okay.
That's why every lot in Dayton is short anyway.
But I'm just saying, if it says one unit per 10 acres, then I think this gives even more flexibility in my, so I'd rather it say one unit per 10 acres.
My concern with running a one per 10, is now is it a strict 10? Or are you gonna say that you could put, because if you say one in 10, is it now we'll go back to the 10 acre rule at the May rates? That's why I asked the question. Because it would, you know, like, it would then be a strict 10, you have to make a 10 acre thing. Now, if you said two per 20, now you could say it could be any one of those.
Do we need a minimum lot size if we say it, you're, whatever you're doing has to average 10?
Yes, because you have to have a minimum lot size for the house and well and two septic systems.
No, I mean, a minimum size to, to apply for this, is that what you were getting at?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, why does it have to be 40 acres, why couldn't a 30 acre apply for this?
So you have to have 20 acres.
What are you saying, 40?
What, four units per 40, so like, that, the implication is, I gotta have 40 acres.
Sure.
That's how, I mean, that's.
You could say two units per 20, that would be the.
Two units per 20.
Because you have to have 20 acres on there to make two units.
Yes, yes.
Whether you make a one seven and a half, or one 12 and a half, or one.
I would accept, so, so I would, okay, so, are we ready to make a motion, or are we gonna talk more?
Uh, I was gonna, as many of the audience wanted to come up and address this thing. So are we, at least to a point where we can move on?
I think so, half an hour's long.
No, go ahead, name and address and.
Um, Zack Brown, 13311, Arrowwood Lane, with BK Land Development, we're the applicants for the Shani parcel. All the setbacks and lot sizes and everything look great, I think some of the issues that I had thought about was just with the list of one or more of the items. You know, obviously, I totally agree that you gotta preserve open space for future development, and if you have a piece that's in a nice flat field and the path of growth, I get that, and a lot of those are probably good ideas. Some parcels just aren't gonna be able to accommodate it, and I think, you know, set my deal aside, there's landowners that want to sell that are gonna be really encumbered by this.
The this meaning the A through E?
Yeah, if you have to do one or more, I think that some of those could be challenging, if not all of them.
But doesn't the ghost planning satisfy at least one of those?
Yes, the one that we submitted?
I'm not specifically talking about you, I'm answering them, sorry.
Yeah, the A through.
Ghost planning does satisfy that, I can't remember which one it means, I think it means one.
A, reserve land resources for future future.
I think it means A.
Yep, so as long as there's no deed restrictions, I know one of the items mentioned, maybe it's not on there right now, but it was like, placing houses on one side or the other for future development, stuff like that. Dennis, I think you mentioned it earlier, people are paying a premium for oversized lots because they want to do what they want with it, and you start telling them, like, hey, you know, building this little envelope of a corner, and that's that, they're not gonna buy the lots, and it kind of defeats the purpose of those types of plats. So I think if we're gonna plat them, we want to make sure that we're not just doing them for the exercise of doing them, but they're meeting the need and goal of the people that are looking to purchase them.
John, item D is where the ghost plating is. That says temporary development agreements, easements, or deed restrictions.
That's the kind of the part.
Well, what does ghost plating fall, where would ghost plating fall under there?
I'm thinking it would be A, is reserve land resources, I mean, it, ghost planning can fit multiple items on here. I mean, ghost planning is just showing that you can meet the three units per acre, and here's how.
Okay.
And then you can take it a step further and say, okay, you're going to require deed restrictions on certain ghost lots. That's up to the council, you don't have to do that.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go back, why do we need them to meet any A through E? Why are we requiring that? Why are we saying that they have to meet one of those? I don't care if they meet any of those.
Well, I, to me, I think the ghost plating makes sense, only because it's, it's pretty straightforward, you don't have to put a lot of thought into it. It's just, it's a checkmark, but it at least gets the city something that says that there's some, yeah, that you're planning.
So then, can we just add an F, which is ghost plating? And just leave, like, would that be fine, like, if it just says ghost plating?
Essentially, in my mind, it, it gives us a path to say that we're, you know, we're still honoring our future land use plan.
So, then I, then I would want to add an F that says ghost, that explicitly just says ghost plating, and not the, you have to read our minds and that, know that ghost plating is secretly hidden in one of these.
I'm gonna say ghost, ghost plating for future sewer development.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We have another comment?
Oh.
Jack, come on up. Uh, Jack Burns, uh, 14770 Thicket Lane. I, I agree with everything you guys have been discussing, I, I think going back to your A through E, or whatever.
Yeah.
I would just put the ghost plating and get rid of the rest of them, and leave it at that. That would be, I mean, I think it gets to where you want to be as far as showing intent to the Met Council if they were to question you. But it makes it flexible for the applicants.
Yeah.
So.
I'm, I was just wondering if there was one or more in here that they would rather do if, I mean, for example, for you, if you've already decided that you're just gonna do this 20 acres, and this 80 over here is gonna be just wine, or just grapes, you don't need to ghost plat, because you're showing.
Yeah, he, yeah, for your present, you could use A, and say, reserve land use resources, and you could say this is all gonna be a greenway overlay on this whole other area, so you can't put anything over it, so you don't have to ghost platter at all.
Okay, I, why was there the assumption that one of those would, that the requirement would be ghost plating? It is now, but, okay, if that's not the case, that's even better.
Yeah.
In Jack's case, so he's gonna, he's got a lot of land, so his lots are gonna be clustered into acre and a half lots, and those are gonna be ghost plated for sewer development.
They're not all acre and a half, but the way the road would go in, they would be on that 20, and then the rest of the 120 acres, other than my son's house, where he's at four and a half acres, or four acres, I think, so that would be one of the lots.
And the farmland is just gonna be farmland, that wouldn't be ghost plating, there's so many options to, how to subdivide that, it's, it doesn't need to be shown.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't ghost plat that, that would, I mean, my intent, when I filed the IUP, would be to, you know, leave that in a vineyard for my lifetime and my son's lifetime.
Yeah.
So, that, you know, you're, you're gonna have a hundred acres roughly of land that won't be developed.
So, but then you're meeting C, and you don't have to bother ghost plating.
See, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what it seems.
So if we left all of the opt, as long as it's only one, right? Like, we're not saying you have to meet all of these, but if you only have to meet one.
My only concern with the one or more, my only concern is when you guys are gone.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Somebody else is gonna say, you need to meet all of these, where you're gonna meet three of these, or four of these, or whatever. Maybe that won't be an issue, because I've already done what I'm doing. Oh, true, once you, once you record it, it's done, but I, I guess my thought was, which I had that exact thought about 30, 30, 30 minutes ago, and that was, that, yeah, a future council could come in and say, well, we're gonna make you do.
All of them.
Or whatever, B, or.
Three, yeah, four of the six, or whatever.
They could just as easily re, rezone, they could make a change to the zoning, and so, yeah. Nothing's ever, yeah. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I mean, I think the, the, the lower the density, the more flexibility you gotta have, like, on roads and stuff, can maybe gravel versus pavement, that kind of stuff.
They make, it makes them more economical.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that. Yeah, I mean, you could put larger lots, if you don't have to spend, you know, three quarters of a million dollars putting in a paved road, is an example. Now, I mean, people may not like the gravel as much as the paved, but.
Yeah, well, and we have the whole area, you know, on the other side of Rain Tree, that's all, it's two, three acre lots.
So.
Yeah. Okay, okay, thank you. Any other comments? Do we have anybody online that wants to speak to this?
So if you wanted to speak to this side, I think you can use the raise your hand function.
In the meantime, anybody else want to speak to this?
Can I just have a question?
Come on up.
What is the difference between A and E?
Kind of fill up the mic. Sorry. Thank you.
I'm just wondering, what is the question between A, I mean, what is the difference between A and E?
Um, E, if I could answer that, E, the intention is that we're, whatever the council's doing, we're, the intention is we're going to allow it to be rezoned at some point in the future when sewer becomes available. Like, we're not creating a roadblock for eventual sewer expansion.
Isn't that A means also future urban development?
Yes, it's just another way of saying it.
So you're saying it two different ways?
Yes.
Why do we need it?
The language, the text is from the Met Council, so again, if, if there's something you want to change, you can do that, this is the time to do it.
Looks like we're changing E to ghost plating.
Yeah, actually, we can do that.
I just want it explicit, right, I just, I don't want the ghost plating in this hidden assumption, I want it explicitly stated, and just that, ghost plating.
Given that that's really what they're saying, E is ghost plating.
Just change E to ghost plating, that's great.
All right.
Change E to ghost plating, yes.
Remove E.
And these are, I don't, don't, didn't catch it in here, but these are all PUDs. And these are, I don't, don't, didn't catch it in here, but these are all PUDs, and there's no, no, um, if we decide that the pipe needs to go through here, we will deal with it, we can deal with it. This is not a deal where they can just split it by right.
So, it, it is not a PUD.
I thought we were gonna do these splits.
We discussed it, but it's simpler to, there's enough flexibility.
It is simpler.
Our three is not a PUD. You know, so if you say, you know, pick one of these items.
I get that, how do we deal with where, I mean, we've got a kind of a final build out on where the trunk lines are going. What happens if this is gonna block that trunk line?
That has to be considered when you review the plat.
Except.
It's going to be different every project.
Yep, but how do we fix it if we don't have a PUD? Maybe I'm missing something.
How do you say no?
Well, how do we say, okay?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on Jason.
You could protect it by having item E as a condition. That's essentially saying you will not build a roadblock with the sewer. So, that's what these conditions do.
But.
That would be your grounds, you're using this as a guideline for approval.
But if we say they only need A, one of A through E.
Right, these are guidelines, you should be following all of them. Would be the recommendation with, with guidelines, it says to follow these guidelines. To be honest, they're all, if, if you're ghost planning, you're addressing all of these. You probably need a twenty-five percent maximum impervious requirement as well to identify.
I think we're showing.
Be consistent with C.
We're at thirty, yeah, but, okay, so, somebody comes in here with a four acre thing, and our final build out shows a trunk line going right under there.
Mm-hmm.
I, it, it seems like.
So, as part of that.
It seems like that's gonna be a problem.
It could be, so.
If they're proposing a roadblock, if they weren't proposing any corridors or ways to get the sewer through the development in the future, they would not be complying with item E. That would be your grounds.
Well, except if they ghost plat, they are, see, that, that's.
Right, and that addresses it. So, ghost, ghost planning would address it, because then you would have them ghost platting, how does the sewer get through once available?
So, so it could be like, you know, say in the short term, drainage utility easement or an outlaw that would go to the city, and this is reserved for that trunk line, you know, thirty, forty years from now.
Let's use the, the Shani parcel for an example, they are proposing a corridor through the site that could be used for the corridor for the sewer in the future. So, they're accomplishing that, they're complying with E, for, and that means.
Okay.
They can also ghost plat, show the splits, which complies with A. Twenty-five percent maximum impervious would comply with C.
It's taking that potential obstruction into account when you're with the ghost.
Right, that's, that's the point of the guidelines, is to make sure you're not building too many roadblocks.
Yeah, you're gonna have the ability to say, no, you can't do that, because you're gonna block it.
And these, it says, okay.
But then, do we have to have it so it's not just one of the following, like it's ghost plat or, or like, because right now, if someone picked C, allow no more than twenty-five percent of the developable land in a project to be developed, then they don't need to ghost plat, and that might not, like, that could be a problem, so if.
That's the only rigid measurement that I see on that list, is the twenty-five percent, because it's a not to exceed number.
Yeah.
You could say these are to be considered, you don't necessarily have to enforce them, they are guidelines. Maybe you have good reason to allow thirty percent on your lots.
So, with our develop, I mean, the way our development works, you start out with a concept plan. And that would be the point where, you know, the council's looking at these five or six items and saying, okay, you know, the code only says you have to meet one of the, the five, but we want you, or we're gonna require you to meet three of the five.
Can we do that?
You can do what you want, it's the council.
How, if they're following the zoning?
Yeah, if the zoning says they only have to meet one, and they're like, well, I'm doing C. And they're like, yeah, but you've put everything right in the way of the future pipe, and they're like, well, I met C, so if you say no, I'm gonna sue you.
That's more of an attorney.
Well, I mean, that's kind of a standard thing, right? If there is, if somebody comes in and they're meeting zoning code, we can't.
Yeah, I don't know if you could say, well, you picked the wrong one out of five, you want a different one.
Well, then, so then my thing is, if we, so then, do we require ghost planning and, or just, or just get rid of A through E and just say ghost planning?
Ghost planning for future sewer development, I mean, I think that meets the general intent, it, it's just, it's a very, it's very generalized. And we're probably, I don't know if we're, we're getting too much in the weeds that, that we don't need to be in.
Are there guidelines for ghost planning? Because I, it, it never would have dawned on me that somebody should go back and look for ghost planning to check to see if a trunk line was under it.
We, we would have to do that as staff, the developer's not gonna even think of it.
Okay.
I mean, so do we just take out A through D and leave E and just, the intent of the district is to allow residential development with a gross density of two units per twenty acres, um, and provide for the rezoning of the future urbanization parcels to the residential zoning classification at densities consistent, whatever, and then leave it at that? Like, would that, would that make everybody happy?
I don't know.
Okay.
Because if we require ghost planning.
Yeah.
And, and there are, there are no other options, and, you know, just pick on Jack's example. So, he's got a hundred acres he's gonna leave alone for, as long as he's able to control that.
Yeah.
But that would mean then, he's ghost planning land that he has no intention of doing anything with.
Which is a waste of time.
So, it's a waste of money.
And money.
To ghost plat areas that are not being touched at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it possible to say something about, um, allow no more than twenty-five percent for C? Because that's the, that's the issue, right, is the C one? That the twenty, that the developed land, um.
This is the hardest one to meet, so if you have, say you have twenty acres.
Yeah.
Okay, you're only gonna develop five of those, and the other twelve and a half is gonna be left as farmland.
So then, would it, I mean, at that point, then, is it possible to get the trunk, like?
Depends on the project. It, it's, every project's gonna be different.
Okay, we just make this a PUD and call it a day?
Well, it sounded like that causes you some worry, walk me through that.
Um, we have PUDs that allows flexibility, we don't necessarily, sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't. So, there, there's not consistency with it, and we can keep doing that. The intention in the R three district was to replace PUDs, and it hasn't worked. But PUDs provides the most flexibility and the least guidance for the developer on how to design the plat.
Well, the only reason we would make it a PUD is that there was something not, that we didn't foresee. That we're looking at it going, well, this is a problem.
And, you know.
Is there any other way we can handle this? Really, it's, I think trunk lines, the only thing I can pick up there. And even then, like Jason said, we, you know, those are, I, fat lines, so.
Fat lines, yeah.
So, just to put a clause in there, that it can't block a, this development, any development can't block a trunk line.
I think that's what he says. That's what he says.
Yeah.
And that's all I, I think you have it in there.
Yeah, the problem is.
We don't have to meet E.
They don't have to meet E.
It can be considered as a guideline, I mean, it would be a discretion review of the plat, I mean, no different than any today. We have trunk lines going through the developments, we looked at one tonight, we have to get the trunk line of DDL to one hundred and seventeenth, they're gonna come for it.
So, you guys don't see this as, that kind of what I'm hearing?
No, I mean, it's only gonna be an issue if, if we have it on the map, and the developer doesn't want to comply with it, and the council doesn't either, and now it becomes a roadblock. I don't foresee that happening.
Okay. Alright, any, any other discussion? So, what changes have we? We added an F?
We added an F for ghost planning, for future sewer development. E has been removed and added, I don't know what the council wants to do with E. Same with C, over twenty-five percent.
Well.
I mean, I'm okay leaving all.
I'm okay with leaving them.
Leave them all and just add the F, ghost plat.
Okay.
For future sewer development. Um, and then, the, the first sentence is, with a gross density of two units per twenty acres, meeting one or more of the following guidelines.
Okay.
And then we added a guideline.
There you go. Okay.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Yeah, okay.
With no comprehensive amendment, make sure it's noted.
No comprehensive plan amendment.
Alright, so we got, alright, Sarah made a motion.
So, no comprehensive plan amendment, but approve the city code text amendment.
Give me a second. I'll second it. Any more discussion? Absolutely not.
There was a sc, well, you had a question.
No, I just was, you have to say you're approving it with those changes?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Sorry.
That's how they did it.
Yeah.
I can't believe me if I fall asleep.
I mean, she was just clarifying, nothing was clarifying.
Okay, no more discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Five to zero. Alright, item J.
Mayors members of council, I'm here to approve the twenty twenty-five budget plan. Let me know if you have any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve. You guys want to beat it to death for a couple of hours?
That wasn't a couple of hours, it was just like one hour.
I want to know for the record that I was right on time until I know.
Did we get a second?
Didn't get a second.
Not yet. Well, I knew that one, you should have known that was. Alright, I need a second.
Oh, actually, I have a, well, discussion.
There we go.
I'm sorry, there's just one, and I just, I think establishing and maintaining a ninety percent favorable rating from residents on police and fire for a long-term plan is unrealistic. I know you're doing amazing right now, but we're gonna grow, and people are crabby. I just, I just think ninety percent is.
It'll be reviewed and.
Okay.
In the short term, I think it's a good one.
Okay.
But you're, you're right, and, and in two years, it'll be re-reviewed.
Okay, as long as, like, that everyone's on that same page, that that is not a realistic number for long-term. And it's not any say, and it's not about you guys, like, you guys are gonna continue to do the amazing work you're doing, we're just gonna have a lot more people, and they're just gonna be a lot, we're gonna have more crabby people.
Indianapolis is in the year.
Sorry, what was that?
It depends on the four hundred people you get to do.
That's tr, that's true, so, um, but I just, I want to make sure it's realistic, and not, we're not, I don't want to set you guys up to fail, um, when you're doing amazing work, so.
Well, it's a target.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as we're on the same page, I'm fine with everything else.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
You need more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, five to zero, and if there are no objections, we will adjourn.
Okay.
Alright, we're adjourned.